Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. Let the record show that today is February 28th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. I would ask my good friend, who I don't get to see near enough, Mr. Abbott, would you do the honor and lead us with the pledge of allegiance, sir?
Pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Thanks for being here this morning. Welcome, everybody. Glad to have you here. There is a seat, Mr. Bogle, if you care to?
Looks like there's others still standing there.
Okay, alright, that's fine. Thank you. Welcome. Madam Secretary, would you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Commissioner Candace.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any additions or amendments to the agenda?
I know, one thought, maybe. Maybe I'll...I think everybody came here today to see Charles come back from vacation. But he's here, so if you want to leave, you can. But, not just a thought, if you're here for the Second Amendment Sanctuary County Resolution, can you raise your hand? Okay, there's a lot of you here. It's at the end of the agenda, maybe we ought to move it forward and have that discussion, and they don't need to stay for all of it, we can discuss that. What do you think?
I think that's a good suggestion.
Chair, would you entertain the motion in that effect?
I'll go ahead and I'll move that we move the discussion of the resolution of 19-02 to Sanctuary County Resolution to the top of new business.
I'll second.
Been moving the Second Amendment to the agenda by moving the Resolution 19-2 to the beginning of the new business, any discussion? I would just say that I certainly agree with this, I just want us to be aware that if somebody walks in here about 11:00 or 11:30 and wants to have input...
We'll have another reason.
They're not going to be very happy about that, but...
But I don't think they...you know, most people probably didn't realize the time, you know. If they do, that is an issue.
I don't think we put a time on.
No, we didn't. It's just typically if it's late in the agenda, I think people have an idea that it's going to come up later, but I certainly appreciate everybody's interest in being here and I would support your motion, so further discussion? Hearing none, if there's a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries.
Did you want public comment?
Uh, no.
Okay.
So, we will move the discussion of Resolution 19-02 Sanctuary County Resolution to the beginning of new business, of which, of course, we will allow public comment at that time. Any other amendments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we will move on to approval of the minutes.
I got them all this time, so I move we approve them.
Now, second to motion. Been moving and seconded to approve the minutes of January 31, February 5, February 6, and February 20. Discussion.
I just want to commend Kelly for doing her job.
And catching up.
Thank you.
Looking pretty good.
I liked her, she did a good job.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries amendment or the minutes for...
31.
Just dropped my document. Yeah, 30... January 31, February 5, February 6, February 20.
Yeah.
My document just went away, so... Audience introductions, let's start over here, please.
Jackie Bubus for the Central.
And before we go further, I know Kelly likes to record the names of everybody in the audience, so we'll kind of go slow, but if you can speak loudly and clearly, and if you do not catch one, just flag me down, we'll do it again. Fair enough, thank you.
Peggy Collins.
Rural West Cliff.
Scott Linstead.
Rural West Cliff.
Okay. Jim Chapland.
Rural West Cliff.
Mr. Abbott.
Tom Harris.
Mr. Trump.
Cal.
Cal Lashley.
Rural West Cliff.
Let's stay on this side of the room, ma'am, if you would, please.
Susan Akin. A-K-I-N.
Rural.
West Cliff.
Colin Joseph.
Rosita.
Jerry Glassman.
Rural West Cliff.
Mark Eber.
Custer County.
Clearing the back, sir?
Richard Foreman.
Rural West Cliff.
Last name again?
Foreman.
Foreman, okay, thank you.
Larkin Foreman.
Rural West Cliff.
Okay, and appearing...
F-O-R-M-A-N.
Appearing in front, please.
David DeTillian.
Rural West Cliff.
You got spelling on that, ma'am, or you okay?
I got it.
D-T-I-L-L-I-O-N.
D-T.
And Teresa.
DeTillian, T-R-E-S-A.
Brandon Russell.
Rural West Cliff.
Dana Mullen. Rural West Cliff, representing Custer County Economic Development.
Shelley Dunham. Southern Colorado Economic Development District.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Danny Smith. Silver Cliff.
Martha Davis. Rural West Cliff.
Jeremy Hockett. As of in Crystal Vista.
Okay.
Ms. Davis, there's a seat.
Charles Bogle. Rural Cliff, Custer County.
Not with economic development anymore, Charles?
Yeah, I'm still there, and basically here's fourth introduction. Our new SCAD.
Good, good, good. Terry DeHollum. Custer County. Listen. Anybody else out there would like to be on the record?
Fred Hernandez.
Fred's out there, Hernandez.
If you'd like, just offering a seat to you, ma'am.
Okay, we're good. Alright, welcome. Thank you guys for being here, appreciate your taking your time out of your day and your interest in our agendas, and welcome. Commissioner Items. Commissioner Prince, would you like to begin, sir?
Sure, I'll go quickly. We just met last week, but I've been kind of busy between that. We met with the Justice Center meeting after the meeting last week, and then that evening we had the Task Force meeting on the new Justice Center, and then the next morning, early, we met again at the bowling alley on the Task Force meeting. I've discussed multiple issues with many people in the county, the one I'd like to just pass on is that I had two different people tell me that Gary Hyde has been doing a really good job on their particular roads. I know we've had some people up there complaining that there have been a lot of potholes and stuff, in fact, I heard that where our new bridge is on Hermit, there's a...
Yeah, we got some problems there.
Yep. Right. But other than that, I've heard very good news, so kind of that's what I've been up to since a week ago.
Have you gotten out of your comfort zone recently and actually driven across the bridge that we drive across?
I know who built that bridge, and I'm...of course I am.
(laughing).
Have a bottle or two.
No, it's fine, I just...I knew you knew about it, I knew it was getting repaired, I just mentioned it, several people mentioned it to me. Yeah, it's great, and I've gotten a lot of compliments on it, as well as the signs, the new signs we've been putting up for the old roads.
I was hoping we'd have a C-DOT person, because we got a serious pothole right here at the intersection of 69.
Tell me about it.
Oh, my gosh, the thing is brutal. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. I wanted to let you know that I've got my own private little collection of satellite phones right back here that I've been gathering up on behalf of CenturyLink. The folks down on the canyon have been turning those in, and I spoke with Tim Konkelman, and I'm assuming you must have had initial conversation, I don't know, but somebody walked in with a sat phone and said, "I was told we're supposed to give these to the commissioners." I said, "Oh, okay." So I let Tim know that we were gathering those, and I'll take those to the meeting on the 29th, turn those in for him. The other thing I want to talk about real quick, it's not on the agenda, but I would like to have a conversation and possibly by general consent, consider moving the two decommissioned sheriff's vehicles that are sitting over by the Sheriff's Department now, moving those down to the airport and storing those...
Yeah, that's a good idea.
At that airport. They are trying to get a plan put together for some courtesy cars down there. The county owns those two vehicles, Sheriff's Department has decommissioned those, I've spoken with Shannon Byerly, good to see you, sir, welcome back, and certainly he didn't have an issue with that. I spoke to the airport board and said, "Look, I don't know if your plan's going to come to fruition or not, have no idea, but we need to do something with these vehicles," and I would recommend we just send them down there, and those guys can park them inside the airport property, and if they get everything put in place for a courtesy car...
I'll be talking with Bogle and Bob this afternoon, and we'll discuss.
I'm going to make a comment. The vehicles are decommissioned after many, many miles and lots and lots of road use. Before we use it to transport people from the airport into town, which I think is a great idea, they'll come shop, spend money, restaurants, whatever, I would just like to suggest that we have them certified, looked over by mechanics to make sure that we're not putting our citizens or people, visitors, into a dangerous vehicle. That's all I'm concerned about.
Yeah, and the good news about that is we have records on each one of those, and they've been done by Byron at the Roden Bridge all these years, and we're all doing all the maintenance up and we're having them recheck that.
But we decommissioned them for a reason, that's why, I just want to make sure they're okay.
Sure, that's what we'll do, yeah.
Yeah, both vehicles have over 200,000 miles on them.
Two hundred and eighty.
I spoke with Sheriff Byerly, he and his folks would pull the DTR radios out of those, and then I think next week we'll speak to Mr. Hyde about having the Roden Bridge crew take the decal off.
I did mention that they actually do take the decals off, Roden Bridge one.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Well, that's good, because the drivers, that was still on like 900 miles an hour down the road.
And the radios...I peeked in the windows quickly, are they on a tree thing, or are they dash mounted, or console mounted?
They're mounted in the console.
Okay, so you...your folks would take those out, and then we'll speak to Mr. Hyde about having Roden Bridge crew, or the mechanics at Roden Bridge...
Yeah, because the overhead lights will have to be taken off, the decals up.
Right.
I mean, they're going to want to take a bunch of stuff out from the inside of them.
Right, so if that's what the commissioners decide this morning, then I think it would be appropriate to talk to Mr. Hyde during the staff report next week and see what his feelings are on that, so... Attorney Smith, you believe this requires a motion to move a vehicle down there that the county owns?
No.
By consent, gentlemen, you okay with that?
Yep.
Thank you. I will speak with the new chairman of the Advisory Board for the Airport, Lynn Greer, and we'll get...
Like I said, I'll be needing one in here this afternoon.
Yeah, when...just let him, if you would just tell him, we'll let them know when the work's been done. There's no reason to take them down there and bring them back and have the decals and stuff off. Don't you think we ought to get the radios out, send them straight to Roden Bridge?
Absolutely.
So next week after we talk to them.
Hey, Shannon, is he there still?
Yeah, Shannon.
Can your guys take them over to the Roden Bridge guys here, and I'll talk to Gary and see if there's a room, but I'll...I'll let you know.
Yeah, I mean, we just need a bit of time to get the radios out and stuff, but we'll get that moved.
Sure, alright, I'll talk to you about it later.
We won't talk to Gary until Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, so we'll have the next couple of weeks be good, but thank you, appreciate that. And then quickly, I won't spend a lot of time on this, but let's see here, just wanted to highlight some of the activities I've been involved with. Our last VOCC meeting was on the 20th, I attended an airport board meeting, and then the Justice Center Committee had a meeting to look at questions submitted to the commissioners on the RFPs for a new Justice Center, so we met on the 21st and looked at those, and then the 22nd, we had a strategic planning task force meeting, 21st and 22nd, one in the evening, and then we had one the following morning. And then I met with one of the representatives from SEH Architect Firm out of Albuquerque, New Mexico, he came up and wanted to do a site tour and look at our property for the Justice Center, his company is planning on submitting a proposal, an architectural proposal, so I spent an hour or so with him, as did Sheriff Byerly. Also attended a Friends of Beckwith reorganizational meeting for their board meet...for their Board of Directors, that was on the 25th, and worked with the airport board, we procured a conference table for them, and we hauled that down there.
Did you get it down there?
Yep, it's down there and ready to go, we're having a commissioner meeting down there in April.
Did it fit?
So, yep, so that'll be nice, they were excited about that, so... Then we had an ESF-11 meeting over at Search and Rescue Building, and that is basically a...an annex in their state wildlife, or wildfire annual operating plan, to make arrangements for the evacuation, not that the county would evacuate, but to have documents in place for the evacuation, care for small and large animals in the event of wildfire. And then that afternoon, we had a CES meeting, Custer Emergency Services meeting, and then yesterday I went out and toured the fire mitigation site in Silver Cliff Ranch, we have a grant paying for a bunch of mitigation work out there, that gentleman is doing a good job, and I know there was some angst about one of the landowners and the condition of the road, but we drove up that road, Cindy Howard and I, I looked at that, there was absolutely no damage caused by any of his equipment, he had pulled a pickup in a dual axle trailer up that road, and so one of the landowners questioned me about that, but I spoke to that landowner and said, "You know, we're fine, there's no damage to this road, so let's just move forward in a positive manner," so I think we're working on that, so that's pretty cool, if you get a chance, it's nice to see that mitigation work going. I think that's about it. Commissioner Candace?
Yeah, about that.
Sorry. Oh, yeah, good point, let's do that. I would like to recognize Custer County Economic Development Committee members, Mr. Bogle and Mr. Mullen, they have an introduction for us, so I will let them do that, they can certainly do a better job of it than I can. Thank you, sir, for reminding me.
We have a new executive director of Southern Colorado Economic Development District, Sherry, and...
Shelley.
Shelley, shoot, we've only met twice, but if you had a couple of minutes, she can give her a little background and let some of you all know what the script is.
Okay, your last name, Shelley, I know it ever written down, but...
It's Dunham.
Dunham, that's right, yeah, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Alright, so I started at my position, I'm the executive director of SCAD, Southern Colorado Economic Development District, February 1st, I'm still very new, the organization's been about a director for a little while, for several months, and so we're...I'm really working on doing a listening and learning tour through, we're responsible for 13 counties in Southern Colorado, so you are my second visit, although I did meet the two gentlemen from your economic development earlier. Basically, I think that the two things that I am focused on right now are learning what is happening to each of the counties and how I can help you advance your economic development efforts, and I think that the two biggest benefits that we can...one, I have been doing, working in funding and economic development for a long time, and I've written funding applications for everything from USDA to EDA to Department of Transportation and everything between, as well as state funding and foundation funding, so the one benefit I think that we can bring is to help connect you to funding, to get the things done that you want to get done in your county. Anyway, there's grant funding out there, Southern Colorado tends to be a little bit forgotten in that area, and so my focus really is making sure that those dollars are there, let's bring our fair share home to where we need it. And the second thing is, is really working to connect each of our counties that I'm serving to the resources that are out there besides money, there's other resources that can be brought to bear to help the people in Southern Colorado, those are really my two areas of focus. So I'm really here today to meet with you, and I'm meeting with your economic development group, and then your housing group also today, to just find out what you need and how I can help.
Excellent, in your office out of Pueblo, correct?
Yes, our office is down in Pueblo, which is great, because it's three hours to the west end of the district from there, and three hours to the east end, so it's nice, right in the middle, and I have to say, this is my first time to West Cliff, it is absolutely beautiful over there. I mean, you can't ask for nothing much better than drive through the San Isabel National Forest in your morning to start your day, so it was absolutely gorgeous trip, and a beautiful place.
Where do you live?
We live in Pueblo.
Pueblo, so you came up over the Harts Ground?
Yeah, we...yeah, I came up the south end instead, and I thought it might be a little more scenic.
Nice to have you, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, nice to meet you. Okay, Commissioner Candace?
Yeah, we did a lot of the same thing, so I won't repeat it, Task Force meetings and et cetera, but the next Prosperity Plan meeting, the strategic plans on the 19th of March, down your calendars, it's a community meeting, and we're thinking about maybe having another Task Force, we'll see how it looks. On that, I thought it went well, it's a great...we had, how many inputs, it's over 600...
Yeah, I think it's 620.
620, I think it was. Oh, you got some more?
And some more.
Surveys, so it is truly representative of the county's opinion, and it's going to be very useful.
When and where is it?
Ranchers Roost, 5:30.
Yeah, it's on Ranchers Roost, at 5:30, if we have a Task Force meeting, that'll be at 3:00 in the afternoon. Then the...it wraps up by 2nd of April, so we're going to have a community joint commissioner Task Force meeting, and we will tweak it, maybe, we'll see what we got, take recommendations and either approve it or tweak it, rework a little bit, and hopefully finish up final documents by the 2nd of April, that's the plan. Worked a lot with the airport, we got the contractor, Cyfords, paid for the burn removal, that went through fine. We have an outstanding invoice for Armstrong Engineering for $3,600 bucks that was submitted back the 1st of February by us to OT6, that should be coming soon. And then I've been working with the Navajo Indian Nation, and it's interesting, because it's good to let the public know what's going on too, we did that in order to find out what kind of aircraft they plan on bringing in here, because we want to accommodate it from a fuel point of view in the future, because there's future development at the airport that OT6 is helping fund, we're going after a grant as well, and I'd like to talk to you about maybe that before you leave.
Absolutely.
We are working a grant with DOLA for the fuel farm on that, and we'll split that with them and OT6, so I'd like to get some ideas from you, maybe that would be useful. But the Indian Nation turns out, it's...they do have a couple of big aircraft that'll be in here, and the airport is load limited for it, so it works based on the testing we did. But more importantly, I learned that the upper end of Wolf Springs Ranch, the north Ranch, they call it, for the Indian Nation, is going to continue as a bison, cow, and calf operation, they're going to use that to stock herds out in the world, and they're also looking to expand that into a meat operation potentially, a market to do that, so they're going to keep it as a ranch. The upper end, they bought the Boyer Ranch, and that's in the Custer County side, and that's going to continue to be a calf, cow operation for their people to work and do different things with, so I thought that was good to find out. Also, they have a piece of ground at the airport that was going to be a hangar for the Redmonds at one point, and we tried to chase down, who owns that? It got varying answers from, yeah, transferred with the deed, but we don't know, and then when I did talk to the Air Transportation Director for the Navajo Nation, he said, "We have no clue where this, where, who owns what." He says they got a turnover of government directors, and they think if they do have an intent to keep it, it would be for a machine shop or something, but I said, "Our intent would be to take it back if they're willing to trade it back to us for our use for other things at the airport." So we'll see, that's going to take some time to resolve. And we had a VSO, a bunch of candidates, good candidates, that we all took a look, we're going to interview those coming up here in a few days, so just wanted to...I thought we had some good candidates to look at. And that's all for now.
Okay.
Get on with this.
Attorney Items?
Oh, just very briefly, a new member of the tourism board, Bob Swanson, contacted me, wanted an agreement to use with people that might submit photographs or videos and things to use, and I went over that and reviewed it, made a few suggested changes, and gave that to him. I prepared this proposed Resolution Number 19-02 that's on the agenda, and I think it will be read and then open for discussion a little bit later, and I worked on a private legal matter that you're familiar with, and I want to...it also affects the county, so I didn't want to discuss that in an executive session at the end of today's meeting and bring you up to date.
Okay, alright, sir. Anything else?
Alright, sir.
Good, good, appreciate it. Admin Assistant Items, I don't think she has any, but...
Just shake yes or no. She has no items.
We have a...an opportunity for public comment on our agenda. Most of you have indicated you're here for the Resolution 19-02, dealing with the Sanctuary County Resolution that we're considering today, so if you have comments about that, I would prefer you hold those until the public comment portion of that agenda, it's on the agenda and it will be allowed for public comment then, but if you have any other public comments, anyone that you would like to bring forward to the commissioners, you're more than welcome to do that at this time.
Any issues? Anything bugging you?
I have some comments...
Go ahead, sir.
...on the ordinance to...on the growing, cultivating, and processing marijuana.
Yes, sir. Could you state your name, please, again?
My name is Danny Smith.
Thank you, sir.
That's going to be ready.
There's a few items on here that are against the Colorado Constitution, I don't see how you...I don't think there's very good due diligence on this ordinance. First of all, it says, "Whereas this..."I only have a copy of Silver Cliff's ordinance, I've been told they're all basically the same.
Okay, well, they're...
So if I say something that isn't on your ordinance, correct?
Okay, now, sir, may I just interject something here for a second?
Yeah.
And the chair would probably allow this debate to continue, you're aware that this is on the agenda?
Yes.
And there will be public comment time specifically for that resolution.
I'll wait for that.
Again, if you're willing to wait, that would be the preference, but the chair's already recognized you, so I would allow you to continue if you so choose, but in the meantime, I might ask our administrative assistant to pull a copy of the resolution that we will actually be looking at, then you won't have to refer to Silver Cliff.
No way.
Perfect, sir, thank you, appreciate that. Thank you very much. Other public comment? Okay, we will move forward. Any unfinished business, gentlemen?
I don't have any.
No.
Nor do I, we'll move on to new business. Again, public comment will be allowed on each item that is an action item, we will hear public comment prior to a vote on any of these things, so I want you to be aware of that. So, first item of business, discussion of the resolution of...and actually, it should be consideration of the discussion, Resolution of 19-02 Sanctuary County Resolution, and I would ask Commissioner or Counselor Smith to read that resolution for us, if you would, please.
I will, and this was at the request of Sheriff Byerly that the board consider adopting this resolution, and I noticed that yesterday, or the day before, Fremont County Commissioners adopted essentially the identical resolution.
And may I just say for the record that this is the first opportunity commissioners have had to consider this.
Yes.
We have not discussed this before, it's coming before the commissioners for the first time.
That's correct, I...he had made...asked if you would consider it, I took the liberty of preparing a proposed resolution and sent it to you for your consideration, and you decided to put it on the agenda today for public discussion and for possible vote on it, so...
Okay, thank you.
With that statement, Resolution Number 19-02, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County declaring said county to be a Second Amendment Sanctuary County, whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County, the Board, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, is aware that legislation is now pending in the Colorado General Assembly, which is known as the Extreme Risk Protection Order Act, House Bill 19-1177, and whereas Section 30-11-101, Subparagraph 2, Colorado Revised Statute, grants to each county the authority to adopt and enforce ordinances and resolutions regarding health, safety, and welfare issues for the well-being of the citizens of the county, and whereas the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution, adopted in 1791 as part of the Bill of Rights, protects the inalienable and individual right of the people to keep and bear arms, and whereas the Supreme Court of the United States in the case of District of Columbia v. Heller, 554 U.S. 570, a 2008 case, affirmed in an individual's right to possess arms, affirmed an individual's right to possess arms, unconnected right to possess arms unconnected with service in a militia for traditionally lawful purposes such as self-defense within the home. And whereas, the Supreme Court of the United States in the case of McDonald v. Chicago, 561 U.S. 742, a 2010 decision, affirmed the right of an individual to keep and bear arms as protected under the Second Amendment is incorporated by the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment against the states. And whereas, the Supreme Court of the United States in the case of United States v. Miller, 307 U.S. 174, a 1939 decision, ruled that firearms that are part of ordinary military equipment or with use that could contribute to the common defense are protected by the Second Amendment. And whereas, Article 2, Section 13 of the Colorado Constitution provides that, "The right of no person to keep and bear arms in defense of his home, person or property or in aid of the civil power when thereto legally summoned shall be called in question." But nothing herein contained shall be so construed to justify the practice of carrying concealed weapons. And whereas, it is the desire of the Board to declare its support of and allegiance to the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and Article 2, Section 13 of the Colorado Constitution, both of which protect and guarantee the inalienable and individual right to keep and bear arms. And whereas, the members of this Board took an oath to support and defend the United States Constitution, the Colorado Constitution and the laws of the state of Colorado insofar as such laws are constitutional. And whereas, it is the unanimous opinion of this Board, the House Bill 19-1177, as presently drafted and proposed, represents a clear violation of the constitutional principles reflected above and that such proposed legislation, if passed, should not be enforced in Custer County until such time as its constitutionality is ruled upon by a court of competent jurisdiction. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved by the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County pursuant to the authority granted the Board by the laws of the state of Colorado as referenced above, to stand and defend the rights and liberties guaranteed by the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution and by Article 2, Section 13 of the Colorado Constitution. We hereby declare this resolution shall be known as the Second Amendment Preservation Resolution Designating Custer County as a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. And be it further resolved that this Board affirms its support for the duly-elected sheriff of Custer County, Colorado, in the exercise of his or her sound discretion and further affirms its resolve to support decisions by our sheriff not to enforce any unconstitutional firearms laws against any citizen of this county. And be it further resolved that this Board will not authorize or appropriate government funds, resources, employees, agencies, contractors, buildings, detention centers or offices for the purpose of enforcing any law that unconstitutionally infringes on the right of the people to keep and bear arms. And then lines for the commissioners to sign if they approve it. And assuming that applause is not from my sterling reading.
That's a very good job.
And the award goes to...
I was sure that, I'm sure that was what it was geared towards. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. The commissioners, with consent, I would ask Mr. Byerly if he has any comments before we move forward.
Go ahead.
So, just so everybody knows, so if you're not familiar, so this resolution basically falls in line, so if anybody followed into Mexico, there's been a lot of tension between the governor, the new governor of New Mexico and the legislature there and the sheriffs of New Mexico. And so about two-thirds, a little over two-thirds of the counties in New Mexico actually have passed a resolution that reads very, very similar to this one. I would love to tell you that I was smart enough to write that resolution up. That is not the case. I didn't reinvent the wheel, but then Sheriff Cooper, who you're all aware of in Fremont County, he and I were on the phone talking and he said that they were seriously considering doing the same thing. And so we put this together. I believe that we needed to do it because I do believe that that ERPO bill will pass the legislature. I do now, without going into detail and boring you, there are, there are some amendments within the, that are going to be proposed in the Senate when it goes to the Senate Committee and then to the full floor of the Senate. And we're very hopeful that some of those amendments get changed because where the true concern comes in is that the ERPO bill was originally floated to address mental health issues and folks that have guns that have diagnosed significant mental health issues. And I think reasonable people will agree, and this may not be the most popular comment, but reasonable people will agree, there are some people that don't have the mental capacity to be toting a gun around. I think that's reasonable to believe that. But this bill goes far beyond that, far beyond that, and really doesn't address mental health issues. And that is the true concern, is mental health on the sheriff's part. And when I say sheriffs, I mean essentially all of us in the state. We do have some concerns about mental health in regards to guns, but this bill was not in. So I believe that we needed to do this. I support this. I don't put it on our Facebook page or the sheriff's office page, but I do have a different Facebook page, Sheriff Byerly, that I do offer opinions on those type of things, but I keep it from the official page because I'm not going to get into banter on that, on that page.
What you make is a good one.
I don't really get into banter on Facebook anyhow, but I'm sorry.
What you make is a good one because we, there are people that don't have the mental capacity to drive a car and we make sure that happens.
But understand this as well, right? So I have two primary concerns about this bill. The first is the gun portion, the cycle that's in there, but also this bill is in direct violation of due process. And if you know what the Fourth Amendment is, if you're familiar with it all, I mean it turns the Fourth Amendment upside down. It would be the only law that any court in the United States has authority over that reverses the role of proof. It no longer requires the suspect, or the suspect is no longer innocent until proven guilty. They are guilty until they prove they're innocent, which, which again, goes completely against the way our laws are written. And so I think, again, reasonable people that are objective can say, "Yeah, that's accurate," because it is. And so, so very concerned about that. So I advocate, advocate for this, obviously, that's why it's here. I asked the commissioners to give serious consideration. It'll be a big deal, bigger quite frankly than I really anticipated. I didn't expect that, all the, all the fanfare, I knew there'd be some, but it is, it's a big deal and it will not shock me if the dominoes start falling in the next month and you start seeing this in a lot more counties around, around the state. So I appreciate...
Except older.
There'll be, there'll be a few that there won't be. They look and for reasons we don't have to get into, but I appreciate, you know, the fact that you're willing to at least consider something that I asked of you, no matter how the vote goes. I do appreciate you being willing to listen to that and support that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Tom, just to back that up, I belong to the County Attorneys Association and there's a lot of interest among them. They asked for if anybody already had one and I have already shared this with some other rural counties who are very interested in adopting the same sort of resolution.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I would say within the next 10 days to two weeks, you'll see 10 to 15 counties that'll adopt something like this. That's my, please don't write that down as fact, but that's my prediction.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sheriff, I'm curious as to why you would want to do this before it passes the Senate and it's enacted into law.
Sure.
Before we know what the final resolution is, before the law is. I mean, we don't know.
All right, so this is the dirty part of the job. Hate it, right? It's all about leverage, right? It's essentially the counties and the state sending a message to the Senate because it's already gone through the House. The full House has already approved it. It's been, it's moved out of the Senate. So now it's essentially, and the way, you learn more about politics than you ever want to when you get into a position like this, or at least more than I ever wanted to. So, right, counties have more, or more ability to influence the bills in the Senate than they do the House, right? Because House is based on population, whereas the Senate's based on each county has so many and that's it. So, so there's only 100 of them. So little bitty Custer County has just as much influence as Arapahoe County. So in the Senate, you have a little more influence. That's the best way to put it. And so by these counties sending a message that, "Look, we don't agree with this and we're, now you're putting pressure on your senator not to be influenced by other senators to vote in lockstep with each other."
I appreciate it. I was wondering why. Because it would, just my, my, without going through what you're saying, which I adhere to, I would have thought, we're opposing something, we don't know what it is yet. Would it be more appropriate to oppose it or discuss it at such time as it actually comes to law? But I understand what you're saying. From the political standpoint, it makes sense to do it now.
And quite honestly, so we've already asked, so the county sheriffs of Colorado, our organization, we've already asked our legal counsel to start looking into what exactly is going to happen to us as a sheriff if we don't enforce it. If it does pass, if it were to pass the way it is now, what can they do to us if we say, "Uh-uh"?
And Jake?
Our understanding is, is they can't put me in jail, but we have to, we want to make sure.
Well, it's very clear in what was just read that if it passes, the county backs you up on what you do. This is not a Sheriff Byerly sole decision. This is a county-wide decision. So I think it's appropriate if you choose not to enforce this, that it would, having the county support you in that makes perfectly good sense.
And quite frankly, that's part of the reasoning.
I get it.
I wanted to say, I don't view this as a statement of opposition to any particular legislation. I view this as a statement of principle that would be valid regardless of what the legislature does.
Right, support for the Constitution.
That's a good point.
Thank you. I would, if you have not, and I would just ask, I'm not trying to embarrass you, who has actually laid eyes on this bill, 1177, in its entirety? 20, 30 pages in that bill. It started in the House Appropriations Committee, then went to the House Judiciary Committee, was sponsored by four Democrats. Representative Tom Solon was the primary sponsor, Representative Alec Garnett, Senator Brittany Peterson and Senator Lois Corp. So those four Democrats were the sponsors of this bill. I looked the fiscal note up. In 2019, the fiscal notes estimated to be less than $24,000 and in 2020, the fiscal note is over $254,000. So I just thought it was interesting and this is February.
And they've already admitted, they've already admitted though, that that fiscal note that they're tagging it at 200-some thousand is about 500%.
Off.
Off.
It's going up.
It's going, it's going to be over a million dollars.
Correct. So... Questions, sir? This, the fiscal... Hold on just a second, sir. Other discussion, gentlemen?
The only other thing that I would recommend, Clint, is we have an ordinance that we passed in 13, 2013, that supports the Constitution, that supports making a statement by this county to not let other laws infringe upon our current rights. You probably ought to, ought to look and read this and maybe we ought to reference that as support for this resolution, reaffirms it and then goes a little bit further in making us a sanctuary, something to that effect, I think. This is, this is a pretty good document, too.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I've looked at that earlier resolution, 2013.
That's broad.
I was here as county attorney and that was, it's the same statement of principle it was addressed because then they were looking at international legislation.
Right, and the local.
And so I don't think there's any inconsistency in the two of them. I think they both stand for the same principle based for different reasons that motivated them.
Sheriff, would you entertain a motion?
I move we adopt the resolution as written, 13-2.
No, 19.
19, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong one. 19-2. We can discuss what I...
Do a second. I'll second the motion. We're moving second it to adopt resolution 19-02, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County declaring said county to be a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. Discussion.
I do, sir.
Go ahead, yes.
Before the vote, are you going to call for a vote? Because I'd like to read a statement before.
Uh, yes, we can call for a vote. Motion's been made, but we're in periodic debate, so you just go right ahead if you'd like, or we can do it.
Why don't we do it when you vote?
Okay, all right. Anything else, sir?
Okay, so Clint, you don't think it's worth reaffirming the broader concern that the county had in the past?
Well, it certainly wouldn't hurt anything, I mean, to put that in here if you decide you want to amend this to a, if it's referenced to the previous...
I just need an opinion as well. It's worth looking at for all you can, I'm okay with this whole public record.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with both of them being on the...
I think they, I think they...
There's no inconsistency at all.
Yeah, that would be the thing, if one was...
Right.
Countermanding the other. Any other debates, gentlemen, before we go to public comment? Public comment? Somebody started my, go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to ask a question about a fiscal note.
Okay, fiscal note is the, in this case, the House Committee's opinion of what they think that bill is going to cost the taxpayers of Colorado. And so obviously, and there won't be much in 2019, they'll be lucky to get it through, but that's what they're estimating. And then next year, of course, if it passes and they, they've come out with $254,000, but it's Sheriff Byerly noted, they've already admitted that's probably not accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the proponents of the bill said that that estimated that in 2018, that ERPO bill would have been used about 178 times, I believe is what they predicted it would have been used across the state last year. Denver Police Department said, "Well, we would have done it about 730 times ourselves." So that's, that's where they're going. It's just, it's going to have a far bigger impact than it's being thrown out there.
Further public comment? Yes, sir.
I have a problem, and I've reported it, I have a problem with your search warrant on a misdemeanor. I've never in 26 years, over 26 years of being a policeman, ever seen a search warrant issued on a misdemeanor. Excuse me, you know, there's such a thing called reasonable suspicion and then there's probable cause. I've had judges deny me search warrants on probable cause because there wasn't enough. And you're putting law enforcement in the middle. They got to serve these things. And it's not fun serving them. My squad and I served over 300 narcotic search warrants in one year, two a night, every night. And bad things can happen when you start going into people's houses.
It's on the news today.
Especially if it's a wrong house. And then precarious liability puts you guys right behind the eight ball.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Other public comment? Hearing done, the chair will, prior to putting the question to the vote, allow Mr. Commissioner Prince an opportunity to read a statement.
Let's go ahead and call for the vote because I, this is really, if you don't mind, because this is relating to my vote.
That's, thank you. Appreciate that point of clarification. Chair, we call for a roll call vote, ma'am, in any order you choose.
Commissioner Kanda.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Flower.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Prince.
I'll vote in one moment. I want to read a statement first.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay. I looked at this as I would, and I never say this in here, but when I was a law student, we had a lot of questions like this and I looked at it in that kind of frame. So I just want to read what I wrote. "Our judicial system routinely denies people of the Second Amendment right to possess firearms. This occurs when a person is found guilty of a felony, when restraining orders are issued, if a person is found to be mentally incompetent, is underage and of various other instances." other instances. The proposed red flag bill, House Bill 19-1117, increases the reasons the courts can remove firearms from a person, from a, from people who are believed to be a threat. It's important to know that no firearms in this bill will be taken away from anyone without a judicial hearing. A judge must find a credible threat exists by clear and convincing evidence, which is a very high standard. The Colorado version of the red flag law differs from similar legislation in other states, that the Colorado version specifies that the person who had their guns taken away must prove that they are no longer a threat, or no longer a risk, to get their guns back. Our judicial system is based upon the correct and defendable overriding axiom that all accused persons are presumed innocent until proven guilty. I ask the question, how does one prove that he or she is no longer a risk? The government should have the burden of proof to show that the person remains a risk, not the other way around. For a law that requires a person to prove that they are no longer a risk is contrary to the innocent until proven guilty fundamental tenet of the United States judicial system. Additionally, the supremacy clause of Article 6 of the United States Constitution contains what is known as the doctrine of preemption. This doctrine states that federal government has supremacy in the case of conflicting legislation. When there's a conflict between a state law and a federal law, it is the federal law that prevails. Certainly, no one can argue that the proposed Colorado red flag law usurps the Second Amendment. However, the doctrine of preemption says, no, federal law is supreme to state law always. Finally, when testing the United States Supreme Court, it has been consistently adjudicated that the right to bear arms is separate and distinct from the Second Amendment's reference to a regulated, a well-regulated militia. In fact, it's a very interesting fact here, that if one reads the history of the Second Amendment, a founding father said that the, and I quote, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state," unquote, references the states defending themselves against our own federal government is necessary to remain free. The Second Amendment is clear and has been tested repeatedly in the Supreme Court. The right to bear arms is the law of the land. For these reasons, I support Resolution 19-02 as presented, making Custer County a Second Amendment sanctuary."
Thank you, sir. Point of clarification, sir, it may have been a miss spoken reference, but you had refer, you had read House Bill 19-1117, and I see you really missed 1177. Would you like to enter that into the record as part of the minutes?
Absolutely.
I'll take that, give it to Ms. Kelly. Motion carries. Three in favor, zero against. Resolution 19-02, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County declaring said county to be a Second Amendment sanctuary city passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, everybody, for being here.
Clint, thank you for your work. Shannon, thank you. Sheriff Byerly, appreciate that. Shits, thank you for being here. You're welcome anytime. Thank you.
Thanks.
What this one turned out, so may not.
We all get out of here, just going to pass a vacuum in here.
This is Bloomberg and all of his money. That's his new tactic, is coming at individual states, trending in states, and knowing that he's going to get it done on a federal level, so.
Chair would entertain a motion, or, without, with consent, gentlemen, five-minute break?
Yeah.
We're in recess. And we'll come back to order. Next item of business is review and voucher, or review the vouchers and the signing of the checks.
I move that we approve the vouchers. February 2000, excuse me, February 2009, as presented.
We're moving to second it to approve the vouchers. Kelly, can you string that door, please?
Can do it.
Approve the vouchers as presented.
Oh, sorry.
Discussion.
I took you out.
I had a couple of things I just wanted to make note of, and I did not get an opportunity to research one of them. Let me pull that document up, but I see that tourism has done business with a flagship publishers, and I know Commissioner Prince, you and I both have tried to sit in on some of those last two meetings. I had to leave one. Do you remember anything about that? Flagship Publishing, $2,736.
I do remember a conversation, but honestly, Mr. Chairman, I don't remember.
Okay.
I do remember there was a discussion. I don't remember what the vote was, but I was...
What are you asking?
Certainly not trying to put you on the spot, just wanted to know if we had some background on...
Do you know anything about them?
The flagship publishing, so. Okay, no problem. I just did not have a chance to research that.
Is it Colorado Life?
Could be, I don't know, flagship publishing.
It may be Colorado Life.
I'm nervous, yes. Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Whispered, yes. Didn't say it. That's pretty good.
And then I had, gentlemen, gentlemen, or folks, sorry. I spoke with Mrs. Hobbie about a couple of other vouchers that came through, one being our Council of Governments recycling dues of $2,332, and there was a credit in there of 1,400-some dollars, based on the materials that were sold, cardboard, I suspect, but I just thought that was interesting, that we're paying a national recycling dues of $2,300 this year. And then another point that I researched a little bit, I talked with Gary Hyde, our Roden Bridge supervisor, was on a purchase of $3,378 for a piece of equipment for their mechanic shop down there. I got my answer to that. It was a big, obviously a heavy equipment, floor jack pneumatic or hydraulic, either one, so those were the questions I had, and I think I got most of those answered. Anything else, gentlemen? Commissioner Kanda?
Nope.
Public comment? I know it's hard to comment on a document, especially a financial document that you don't have in front of you, but if you had a question about the processes or whatever, glad to have, answer those. Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote on approving the vouchers for February...
I move we accept the presentation, the vouchers as presented.
I thought, we have that motion. We have that motion.
Did we already do that?
On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay?
It was noisy then.
All right, we'll, if you don't mind putting your...
Took everything, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right, no problem. And so while we're doing that, we will move on, and we will recognize Counselor Smith for the second and final reading of Ordinance 19-01. And for the folks in the audience, so that you understand, we will hear the second and final reading, and then the chair would entertain a motion, if there is one, and prior to voting, then we will have public comment. You okay with that, folks? Good. All right, sir.
And for the record, the first reading was done on January 31st of 2019, and at that time, it was adopted on first reading, but the statutory procedure requires the second reading. Ordinance number 19-01, an ordinance of Custer County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, regulating residential growing, cultivating, and processing of marijuana in the unincorporated areas of said county. Whereas, Section 14 and 16 of Article 18 of the Constitution of the State of Colorado, Amendments 20 and 64 respectively, authorize persons to grow limited amounts of marijuana or to assist others in growing marijuana. And whereas Amendment 20 granted local governments the general authority to prohibit commercial marijuana operations.
That's what he's reading.
And whereas with the adoption of Ordinance number 13-01 on September 5, 2013, by the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County, the Board, commercial marijuana operations were prohibited within the unincorporated areas of Custer County. And whereas neither Amendment 20 nor Amendment 64 permit local governments to deny individuals the constitutional right to engage in non-commercial, unlicensed grow operations. And whereas regulations of the state of Colorado pertaining to commercial marijuana operations are generally not directed toward non-commercial, unlicensed individual grow operations. And whereas this circumstance has resulted in a proliferation of non-licensed and unregulated marijuana grow operations in Custer County that present, present significant health and public safety concerns, with multiple violations of the Custer County zoning resolution, and also violations of electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and fire codes that are enforced for the unincorporated areas of the county. And whereas Section 30-11-101, Subparagraph 2, Colorado revised statutes, gives the Board the authority to adopt and enforce ordinances regarding health, safety, and welfare issues, and to provide penalties for violation of same. And whereas the Board is further authorized pursuant to Section 25-1.5-106, parentheses, 13.5, Colorado revised statutes, to regulate the growing of marijuana, commercial or otherwise. And whereas the Board is further authorized pursuant to Section 9-7-113, Colorado revised statutes, to ban the use of compressed flammable gas in the extraction of THC or other cannabinoids in a residential setting. And whereas the Board has determined that the adoption of regulations governing the growing, cultivating, and processing of marijuana in a residential setting is necessary and desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Custer County. And wherefore, this Ordinance number 19-01 does not unreasonably impair or impede the exercise of constitutional rights afforded citizens under Amendments 20 and 64. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Custer County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, as follows. Part one. Section one, scope of ordinance and authority. This Ordinance number 19-01 applies within the unincorporated areas of Custer County and regulates the growing, cultivating, and processing of marijuana on any lot, parcel, or tract of land by any person, including but not limited to patients, primary caregivers, or persons engaging in such conduct for personal use. Section two, definitions. The definitions contained in Amendment 20 to the Colorado Constitution, the Colorado Medical Marijuana Code, the Colorado Medical Marijuana Program, and any regulations promulgated by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and the Colorado Department of Revenue, as amended from time to time, are incorporated into this Ordinance number 19-01 by reference, including but not limited to definitions of marijuana, medical marijuana, patient, and primary caregiver. All other applicable definitions are as stated herein. Subparagraph A, accessory, accessory structure means a subordinate structure detached from but located on the same lot, parcel, or tract of land as the primary residence, the use of which is incidental and accessory to that of the primary residence. Subparagraph B, accessory use means a use incidental to and subordinate to the primary residence. Subparagraph C, primary residence means a residence where a person, by custom and practice, makes his or her principal domicile and address, and to which the person intends to return following any temporary absence such as a vacation. Residence is evidenced by actual daily physical presence, occupancy, and use on a regular basis for domestic purposes such as, as but not limited to, slumber, preparation and partaking of meals, regular mail delivery, vehicle registration, or water and utility billing. A person shall have only one primary residence. Subparagraph D, primary use means the main use of a structure or land as distinguished from an accessory use. Section three, growing, cultivating, and prevent, processing of marijuana. Subparagraph A, marijuana may only be grown, cultivated, or processed as an accessory use at the primary residence of the person engaging in such activity, and only, one, for such person's own consumption and use, or two, if the person is acting as a primary caregiver, then for the consumption and use of that person's patients. Subparagraph B, marijuana may only be grown, cultivated, or processed in a primary residence where residential use is the primary use of the structure, or in an accessory structure to the primary residence on the same property. Subparagraph C, the space used for the growing, cultivating, or processing marijuana, whether in a primary residence or an accessory structure, shall be limited to a contiguous 1,000 cubic foot volume. Subparagraph D, the use of an accessory structure for the growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana shall only be permitted on a lot, parcel, or tract of land that is one acre in size or greater. Subparagraph E, marijuana shall not be grown, cultivated, or processed in more than one structure on any single lot, parcel, or tract of land. Subparagraph F, marijuana shall not be grown, cultivated, or processed within the common areas of a multifamily or attached residential development. Subparagraph G, any area used for the growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana shall be fully enclosed and locked, ensuring accessibility only by the person growing, cultivating, or processing the marijuana for personal use or for medical use, and to prevent access by children, visitors, casual passersby, or anyone not authorized to possess marijuana. Subparagraph F, or H, any area used for the growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana shall comply with all applicable land use codes, building codes, and fire codes, including plumbing, electrical, and mechanical regulations and requirements. Subparagraph I, non-residential buildings or structures that are not accessory to a primary residence shall not be used for the growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana. Subparagraph J, marijuana shall not be grown, cultivated, or processed outdoors. Section four, marijuana plant limits. At any given time, no more than 12 marijuana plants in any stage of maturity may be grown, cultivated, or processed in a primary residence or in an accessory structure on a single lot, parcel, or tract of land, regardless of how many persons, 21 years of age or older, may occupy said residence. This limitation, which is based on Section 18-18-406, Subparagraph 3, Subparagraph A, Subparagraph Roman numeral 2, Subparagraph uppercase A, Colorado revised statutes, supersedes the statutory provision that grants to each person, 21 years of age or older, the right to grow six marijuana plants for personal use, and also supersedes the statutory provision that grants to a primary caregiver the right to grow more than 12 plants for his or her patients. Section five, use of compressed flammable gas products or flammable liquids. No compressed flammable gas, for example, butane, or flammable liquid, may be used in the growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana. For purposes of this section, flammable liquid means a liquid that has a flash point below 100 degrees Fahrenheit and includes all forms of alcohol and ethanol. Section six, marijuana activities shall not be perceptible. The growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana shall not be perceptible from the exterior of the structure in which... the exterior of the structure in which such activities occur, including but not limited to: A. Common visual observation; B. Light pollution, glare, or brightness that disturbs the repose of others; C. Undue vehicular or foot traffic, including unusually heavy parking in the immediate vicinity of the primary residence. Section 7. Smell or Odor. The smell or odor of marijuana, growing, being cultivated, or being processed at a primary residence or in an accessory structure, shall not be detectable by a person with a normal sense of smell from any adjoining lot, parcel, tract of land, public right-of-way, or building unit. Section 8. Rental Property. Any lessee or tenant who uses a rental property in whole or in part for growing, cultivating, or processing marijuana shall obtain written notarized permission from the property owner prior to commencing such use. Part 2. Section 1. Administration and Enforcement. The Custer County Sheriff shall be responsible for the administration and enforcement of this ordinance number 19-01. Section 2. Penalty for Violations. Any person who violates any provision of this ordinance number 19-01 after its effective date commits a Class II petty offense pursuant to Section 30-15-402 Subparagraph 1 Colorado Revised Statutes, and upon conviction thereof shall be punished by a fine of not more than $1,000 for each separate violation, plus a surcharge of $10 pursuant to Section 30-15-402 Subparagraph 2 Colorado Revised Statute. Each day during which such violations exist shall be deemed a separate offense. Section 3. Penalty Assessment Procedure. The penalty assessment procedure set forth in Section 16-2-201 Colorado Revised Statutes shall be followed by law enforcement officers charged with enforcement of this ordinance. Pursuant to the penalty assessment procedure, the violator may, in lieu of going to court, choose to pay a fine in the amount of $1,000 plus a $10 surcharge for a violation of any provision of this ordinance. If the penalty assessment procedure is declined by an alleged violator who chooses instead to appear in the county court for Custer County and who is ultimately convicted of a violation of this ordinance in said court, then customary court costs may be assessed in addition to the fine. Section 4. Disposition of Fines. All fines and surcharges assessed for violations of this ordinance shall be paid to the treasurer of Custer County. Section 5. Additional Remedies. The remedies provided in this ordinance shall be cumulative and in addition to any other federal, state, or local remedy, criminal or civil, which may be available. Section 6. Severability. Should any section, clause, sentence, or part of this ordinance be adjudged by any court of competent jurisdiction to be unconstitutional or invalid, the same shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the ordinance as a whole or any part thereof, other than the part so declared to be unconstitutional or invalid. Section 7. Safety Clause. The Board of County Commissioners fines -- the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County hereby fines, determines, and declares that this ordinance number 19-01 is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, welfare, and safety. Section 8. Effective Date. In order to preserve the immediate health and safety of the residents and citizens of Custer County, this ordinance number 19-01 shall take effect immediately upon its adoption and second and final reading as provided in Section 30-15-405 Colorado Revised Statutes. And then it indicates introduced, read, and adopted on first reading on the 31st day of January 2019, an order published in the Wet Mountain Tribune. That first reading was approved, it was signed by all three commissioners attested to by Kelly Camper, the county clerk and recorder. And if it's approved today, then it will read adopted on second and final reading on the 28th day of February 2019, and ordered published by reference to title only in the Wet Mountain Tribune. Lines for the commissioners to sign and for their signatures to be attested by the clerk and recorder.
Thank you, sir. Group, pleasure.
We should applaud his wonderful.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
A lot of writing.
Get that man some water.
Was it really? I move that we approve the second reading by signing in the space provided.
I'll say.
We moved the second, approve the second and final reading of Resolution 19-01, an ordinance of Custer County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, regulating residential growing, cultivating, and processing of marijuana in the unincorporated areas of said county. Discussion, gentlemen? Prior to public comment, any discussion?
Nothing new.
Commissioners, public comment? Name again, sir, if you would.
Danny Smith.
Danny Smith, thank you.
Senator Plut, resident. I've heard it up to.
Can you give us a page number, sir?
Page 1.
Okay.
It's Amendment 20 granted the local governments and general authority to prohibit commercial marijuana operations. I've read the Colorado Constitution on this, and it says that is true, but it says it must be done with the vote of the people, and I don't think the county commissioners had a vote of the people, and they're love that. You might want to check on that.
There was a public.
There was a vote on that.
It was?
Yeah, there was.
I know Senator Plut did, I didn't think the county did. Okay. Paragraph 4. Neither Amendment 20 nor Amendment 64 permit local governments to deny individuals the constitutional right to engage in non-commercial, unlicensed grow operations. That is true. Paragraph 6. The reason for this, the circumstance has resulted in a proliferation of non-licensed and unregulated marijuana grow operations in Custer County. I'd like to ask the sheriff, how many of these have you busted, and how many arrests and convictions have you had with them?
So, I, Danny, I don't have, I didn't want to prepare to answer exactly, but I'm going to say there were six or seven illegal grows that we busted.
That's 15.
In the whole county.
Since 15, in the county.
In three, in four years?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead, sir, with your public comment. That's not necessarily a question and answer period, we're here to listen to your comments.
All right. Paragraph 8. Section 30-11-101 Subparagraph 2 CRS gives the Board of Trustees the authority to adopt and enforce ordinances regarding health, safety, and welfare issues, and provide penalties for the violation of same. I don't, I looked that up, I didn't see where it gives you authority to supersede the Colorado Constitution. And I'll get to more of the constitutional problems here later. You're talking about the health, safety, and welfare issues, you know, prohibiting people there to grow medical and recreational marijuana, it's actually all medical, I don't care what you call it, it all helps with things. Prohibiting these grows, which I'll get into why, what, how you're doing that, actually affects the health and safety of the citizens of this county. A lot of people need this, it's medicine. A lot of people are getting off opium, which we're having a problem with in this country. I know people that have reduced all their pharmaceuticals tremendously by using medical Page 3. Paragraph A says marijuana may only be grown, cultivated, or processed as an accessory use at the primary residence of the person engaging in such activity. Caregivers, according to the Constitution, can grow on separate property from their residence, and in fact, some of them prefer that because they don't want to grow with their children. In fact, if 13 or more plants grows, it has to be on agricultural property, not residential. Paragraph C. You're limiting the space to grow to 1,000 cubic foot. That's a 10-foot-by-10-foot-by-10-foot area, which is barely large enough to grow two plants, not six or 12, it's just ridiculous. You're limiting the people to grow their allotted amount. Paragraph D. Limiting the areas, parcel, to one acre or more, that pretty much, I know this is a county, but people at the lake that don't have an acre of land, that prohibits them from growing their medicine, especially the people in the towns, which I guess this doesn't You can, paragraph E, you cannot grow in more than one structure on any single lot, parcel, or tract of land. To grow marijuana, you grow clones because you want to get rid of the male plants, which are not effective and don't have the medicine. You can't grow the clones and the marijuana in the same area, you need to grow the clones And according to my reading in the Colorado Constitution, caregivers are allowed 99 plants if they have the number of caregivers or patients allowed at that many, they can grow that many, I don't know how, there's an ordinance here, I wasn't able to look up. Also, it says all, all the plants, the Constitution defines plants under eight inches tall and eight inches wide are not part of a plant count. You guys stated, I know, all plants of any size, so that's wrong. In Section 7, the Safety Clause, they're passing this for the preservation of public health and welfare, it's actually limiting people's health and welfare, and also if you limit the amount of people's ability to grow their medicine, what that's going to do is bring in black market grew up people, and I don't think that's going to help the health and welfare of the community.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That's right.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Other public comment? Yes, sir?
Yeah, my name's Jeremy Hockett, I live out in Cristovista, and I need, let me break this down for you. I smoke about 24 pounds a year. That equates to about two pounds a month, or about half ounce a week, or about an ounce and a half, maybe two a day, depending on how crazy I get, which is about 10 to 20 joints. I need this. I don't have a driver's license, I can't go nowhere. I live on a homestead on a farm. I take care of myself, I take care of my animals, I got goats, rabbits, chickens, ducks, donkeys. I don't want to be in town. I don't want to be here, but I got to defend my ability to grow my medicine. I need this. Okay, I don't have, I've been in mental hospitals for years, I'm, I did 14 years in the military, I did six appointments. I'm about my freedom. Don't take my freedom, don't, don't limit me in my ability of what I need, okay? I can't go nowhere. I need this, I got to take care of myself, and that's what I'm going to do. So, please, please don't limit my ability to grow my medicine. I have my red card right now. I don't, I'm not going to give it up, I just, I can't, I need to grow summers, I need to grow years worth of weed in the summer. I don't, I can't, I can't afford to put lights on in my house and do all that jazz, because I'm only apparently allowed one structure, I mean, this really, really affects me. So, please, please don't take that away from me, because I don't, what am I going to do? What do I, what's my ability?
Thanking everybody.
Do you agree? So, I, that's what I.
Thank you. Further comment? Yes, sir? State your name if you would, please.
My name is Brandon Rupp. I'm a caregiver in this county. I provide medicine for vets who cannot make it down the hill. As far as public health and safety, to hear that there might have been only six or seven illegal grows in four years is an average of less than two per year. It is not a health and safety concern that we have to illegal, make growing illegal for, for the reason that there's illegal grows sprouting up everywhere. My grows have been found in compliance by local law enforcement. I cannot provide for my, my state right of five patients who are all veterans. I cannot provide for them with 12, with 12 plants, I cannot provide for them in 1,000 cubic feet, and I cannot provide for them in my residence. I do not want to grow marijuana for, for patients in a place where my children live. Colorado statute has already said that if I was going to have more than 12 plants, I had to do it in an agricultureally, commercially, or industrial zone location. So, I went out of my way and spent much asset acquiring that land to be in compliance with the state, and now you were telling me that I have to grow it in a residence when I just spent time, effort, and money being in compliance with the state since I was going to have more than 12 plants, it had to be in an agriculture, commercially, or industrial zone location. So, I would consider that, even though I'm not allowed to profit on marijuana, I can only help people as a caregiver, it is still a loss of asset to me that I went out of my way for state compliance, and then you are telling me overnight I am not in compliance. For me, in my greenhouse, 1,000 cubic feet is one marijuana plant. And so, I cannot provide for five patients with 12 plants. These people need the medicine. And in closing, I just want to read its Colorado Amendment 64 Subsection 3. Notwithstanding any other provision of law, the following acts are not unlawful and shall not be an offense under the Colorado law or the law of any locality within Colorado, or be a basis for seizure or forfeit of asset under Colorado law for persons 21 years of age or older: a. Possessing, using, displaying, purchasing, or transporting marijuana; b. Possessing, growing, transporting, processing, no more than six marijuana plants; and possession of the marijuana produced by these plants on premises where the plants are grown, provided that the growing takes place in an enclosed locked space, not conducted openly or publicly, and not made available for sale. Notwithstanding any other provisions, basically means that if there is another law written that is in contradiction of the constitutional law, which you guys are claiming or not, that this provision would still apply. And in my opinion, arbitrarily assigning that you have to have an acre or more of space to grow your six plants is in contradiction of everyone's right over the age of 21 to grow their six plants. It seems like you're writing a law against the poor, where if you can't afford an acre of land, then you can't grow your six plants, and the people who can't afford an acre of land are the people that need it the most. They are the people that can't go to a dispensary and pay for it, and I, I guess that's all. Thank you for listening.
You bet. Further public comment?
I've got something to say.
Uh, state your name, sir, go ahead.
Jeff Ivy. First off, sorry for being late.
Okay, the name again?
Jeff Ivy.
Thank you, sir.
Ivy, like the plant.
Okay.
You know, I don't know what was discussed before I showed up, as I said I was late, but, you know, I just got a couple of concerns about this. One is like income in the county, like all these small businesses and stuff that everybody tries to run. It's hard enough in the winter. You're going to take my medicine away, so I have to go down the hill and pay for, pay for it, which is money I could spend in this county. You know, second of all, if I don't have my medicine, and I'm back to 120 OxyContin a week, 30 Florenopin a week, 30 Trazodone a week, I was ejected out of Humvee in 2007 in Iraq. I moved here so I don't have to do that medicine regimen. It was destroying my liver at 22 years old, I can't do it anymore. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Further comment?
I'll take a comment from you. Your boss.
Yeah, we're going to have a discussion, I just want to make sure we get everybody an opportunity to have a discussion. Okay, further discussion, gentlemen?
I do.
Go ahead.
I hear what you're saying. And as much as I personally don't condone marijuana smoking, I absolutely agree that there is a medicinal purpose for it, that it has been proven to be a valid remedy for some diseases that there is no other cure for. I'm concerned about this ordinance that we're about, that we are looking to approve on the second reading, it's already been approved. I think we should go back to the drawing board. I think we should go back to the drawing board and allow a medical professional or medical professionals, however we do, and state that if there are, there should be some exceptions to this law, and that for people like you, sir, I hear you loud and clear. And you, sir, I hear what you're saying about your patients.
Thank you, sir.
And I think we need to have some method of allowing these gentlemen legally to circumvent what we tried to pass today.
Couple of quick questions here, too. Hey Clint, on a lot of this, did you pull this from any other proven ordinances or how did, what?
How did this come?
This one specifically, I followed Douglas County ordinance. It's been in effect for some period.
Right.
Since the statutory provision allowed the counties
Right.
to make modifications.
So it has been tested?
Yes.
Well, yeah, but still has another.
Whoa, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Go ahead, sir.
No, that's all I had to say, is that that's where I got this from after the sheriff said that we had a problem here and asked, you know, to see if we could do something about it. My research came up with this and that particular statutory provision that gave local boards of county commissioners to make regulations, and this is the one that seems to be used by a number of different counties now.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Clint, when you say that it's been proven, has it gone to court?
I, it's, I am not sure about that. I'm just saying it's been, it's in effect under jurisdiction.
Well, it's in effect, but it hasn't gone through the court.
Has there ever been an injunction filed in Douglas County?
I don't know what the legal history of it is.
Has you looked at other counties and maybe proposed to adopt their system?
The other ones that I saw all followed the same one. That was just the one I happened to choose because they were all very similar.
Did we have a problem with the legal grows or people that were in compliance? I think the problem in the county was with the legal grows. I don't think changing the law is gonna prevent criminals from preventing their crime.
I cannot provide for five people with 12 plants. I cannot.
Where you can't grow 12 in that cubic space.
I hear, I hear what you're saying. Loud and clear, and that's why I'm proposing we go back to this and write some kind of reasonable exception for folks like you.
For medical uses of what you're proposing.
Right. Somebody with a professional, if we got a prescription from a doctor.
Proven compliance.
I know, I know that the medical marijuana card is somewhat of a farce, that you open the back of the magazines in Colorado Springs, you can find 15 doctors for 200 bucks will give you a medical marijuana card.
We're on.
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
However, however.
Some people really need it.
Let me finish, sir. I'm on your side. Get that right, okay? I agree with you legitimately, not the back of a magazine, and I don't know how we would come up with that, but maybe we didn't ask our medical professionals, our county nurse and the clinic board and those people to help us come up with. How can we not just willy-nilly give out exceptions to this, but have some kind of proven or strongly hinted at need for an exception to this law? I would be strongly in favor of that because I hear you and I agree with what you're saying.
Obviously, one should choose their words carefully here. I think we have sat and listened to your concerns, and some of them are very valid. I would like to have you understand where I'm coming from as commissioner. I was elected to this position by constituents of this county. I think they elected me based on how they felt I believed, what my political views were, what my beliefs were for the county. Personally, I don't want anything to do with marijuana. Personally, I don't buy that marijuana is a medicine. I take accept. Ah, hold on, sir. Now, but, but, here's what we're gonna do. If there's, if there's an issue with this, let me know right up front. I don't believe, any of the commissioners interrupted anybody in this public forum. Is that correct? So I would ask the same courtesy from y'all. I'm not gonna argue the science of whether marijuana is medicine or not. I personally do not care for the word "medicine" in place of "medical marijuana." I think there's two different things. If people choose to use marijuana as a medical remedy, that is entirely their opinion and their right given by the legislature of Colorado. You have to understand, we're forced to deal with marijuana by the state of Colorado. Doesn't mean I have to like it. There's no part of it that I like. I think it's ruining this state. Am I arguing that it's not good for you gentlemen's cases? No, I'm not saying that. I want you to understand that. I'm not arguing that point. But I get tired of hearing "medicine" in the place of the word "marijuana." Not just this morning. I'm not talking about that. So I'm telling you where I'm coming from, okay? If there is anything in this resolution that is illegal, then I suspect our attorney would have informed us of that. Would that be a correct statement, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
If and when I vote on this, I will vote with the thought that there's nothing illegal in this document. If it were, I don't believe counsel would be bringing it to us today. I don't think any part of marijuana is in the best interest of this county. I certainly can tell you the people that elected me to this position would agree with that. Further comments, gentlemen? Discussion?
What gives you the right to come in here and dictate our whole program, just because of your belief?
Contradicted Colorado has designated.
Gentlemen, I will gavel all of you to silence. I have that authority. I don't want to do that. I don't want to be rude and arrogant, but I will not tolerate this out of control discussion here. We have been very respectful in listening to what everybody had to say. If, gentlemen, and I appreciate that, you want to speak, you must be recognized by the chair. Go ahead, sir, in the back, standing.
Jeff Ivy again. You said that you don't like hearing "medicine" and the, and the use of medical marijuana. The federal government just voted the hemp and CBD, the, you know, in an agricultural state. CBD plants are actually marijuana plants.
Understood.
You know, so you have the whole nation that's saying that CBD is a medicine, which is a marijuana plant. It's just a different strain of a marijuana plant. And you're saying this, and then you're saying the people that elected you, the people that elected you are the people in this county, the people sitting in this room, some of them who have jobs that cannot make it here. That's the people who elected you. If, if we want to vote on this, if we were doing what's right for the county, I think it would be to let the people vote on it instead of going through an ordinance where the people don't get their vote. We have to come and talk to you guys.
Okay. Yes, sir, you had your hand up.
Danny Smith, when you say you don't see it as a medicine, that's just your ignorance. There are volumes and volumes of scientific medical studies all over the world that prove it is a medicine. You should do a little research yourself and find out that you're wrong. It is a medicine, and a very potent one, and it helps people in a lot of ways. It helps people get off of pharmaceuticals, opiates. It's reducing the opiate crisis, which is a big problem in this country. I don't like it.
Okay, understood. Yes, sir? In the back, please. In the back, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I really feel that making such emotional statements really portrays the prejudice that you have for, like, the actual informed decision that you're about to make. So please, as a constituent, please don't let your prejudice affect how I need to live my life. I need to live my life this way. Otherwise, I'm gonna kill myself for somebody else. I need this.
Go ahead, sir.
If the laws that we're living under are here are Colorado statutes, and Colorado has said that marijuana is medicine, then it's his personal prejudice? Does that make him, should he recuse himself from voting because of his personal opinion?
Absolutely.
Okay. Since you're talking about me, let me respond to that. I guarantee I got a personal prejudice against this. I, there's nothing wrong with that. There is no political correctness about this. I think we're trying to have an open, honest dialogue. Whether you agree with me or I agree with you, doesn't matter. The point is, do we have a forum that we can speak and share our beliefs? I, I think that we do, okay? Whether you agree or disagree on it, doesn't matter. That is not the point, okay? I don't think we have a gag order as elected officials not to say how we feel about things. Doesn't matter who it lines up with. That's not the point.
But does it make you incapable of making a non-judgmental vote as a county employee? Like, are you required because of your opinion or, or in contradiction with the Colorado statute? Since your opinion is in contradiction to the Colorado statute, must you recuse yourself from the vote?
No. No. By law, there is no, there is no stated law that forces anyone to recuse themselves from a vote. That is a personal choice. You bet. Yes, sir.
I've got one more thing. You know, the back and forth thing, it's just going back and forth, really. I agree with Jay. I think it needs to go back on the drawing board. Just my personal opinion, just like you have your opinions.
Sure.
I think there's different ways to combat the illegleness in the grows in the county, whatever situations the sheriff's department may be encountering with it, other than regulating the people that are in compliance, that are doing the right thing. I think there's a way to go against the illegal side of it, other than restricting the people that are, that are abiding by the law.
Okay. All right. You had another comment, sir?
I, I just wanted to add that, you know, I, I'm positive that he is a great lawyer, and that he writes things that he believes are lawful, but he is just a human. So just because he comments that nothing in that stat, nothing in the ordinance that he wrote is illegal, does not mean that that is so.
That's true. I mean, this would have to go before court if, if somebody decides that they take exception to whether this is a legal document or not. Absolutely agree with you.
Thank you, sir.
I guess, my figure of course, because I, I'm sorry that I get emotionalized and I speak sometimes while I think, but, uh, I guess the one thing I would ask is that we at least take it from the absolute that we're gonna vote today and then we're all out of compliance, to a, back to the drawing board, and let's really, let's do this right. Let's, let's try to, let's try to help people.
Okay. And you certainly understand, this is the second reading of this.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, sir.
You know, just, just a reminder, everyone, it was a different board, but a few years ago, the board thought that they were writing a law that was legal that allowed them to sell a road. As it turns out, after a quarter of a million dollars in court fees and going to the Colorado Supreme Court, they learned that it wasn't legal to sell that road. They wrote that law anyway. I think this, this needs a second look because, because the county doesn't have to waste another quarter of a million dollars to be proven wrong.
Okay, good point. Further comment?
I got a couple of things to say. You first, Peggy.
Commissioner Flower, I truly appreciate your candor.
I bet you can do.
Candor, sorry. She personally appreciates candor, too. I'm sorry, I couldn't resist.
And all three of you, actually, to listen. These people are my friends. I know their history with the war. I know their medical background, and I support them.
Okay.
Jackie says something.
You know, Tom, I think that I would be right beside you on your feelings about marijuana. But, gosh, I hate to hurt vets. And, and it seems like, you know, and I can't imagine that Shannon wants to hurt vets either. He is one. Maybe there, maybe there is a better way to get to where we want to be. You know, I don't know. I mean, I, I, I am, I'm a hard ass with most of this stuff, but, man, these guys gave a lot so that we could sit here today and vote on this. And I'm just not sure, I, I would have said before you read it that it's the right move, but now I'm not so sure.
Okay. All right. Let's hear.
Like Shannon in the back.
Commissioner Candor?
So, I just like.
Hold on, just a second.
I'll wait till the end.
Maybe we've forgotten who's gonna distribute conversation here. No offense taken. Yes, ma'am, you've been patiently waiting.
I'm, I'm not a veteran. I have some medical issues that CBD and marijuana, small amount of THC, help me with. I don't smoke marijuana. I never have, won't, not interested in it. But I have gotten off of about 10 medications, and I'm able to function. I'm able to go to work for Peggy when she needs me, too. I mean, you know, I can function in a way that I was not able to when I was taking Trisone, Tramadol, Promexapole, all these different things, all day, every day. I was, I was a zombie, and I'm able to function now, and it's very important to me. Now, should you pass this, and all these guys are unable to help me, then I'll just have to go to Pueblo County and spend that money there. And I, I think it's unfortunate to send revenue out of the county. I do agree with you that there are, a lot of people that maybe don't follow the law. I think that the way this is written, it hampers these small business people, is what I'm gonna call them. I think that, I don't think that's your intent. I think the intent is to allow things to happen in an orderly and controllable manner. But I think even just the fact that the 1,000 cubic feet is, is unreasonable. I mean, just that little fact makes me really agree with Commissioner Prince that we go back, that it's revisited and maybe redrafted. Thank you.
You bet. Let's hear from Sheriff Barley.
So I wasn't actually here for the first reading of the ordinance. I was out of town, and so I didn't get a chance to talk about this ordinance at all. I did speak to the Silver Cliff ordinance when they were, on their first reading on it. And I believe the town of Wesco was gonna try to get the entire county to fall into line and, you know, some consistency to make it so that no one gets confused or know what happens. But one of the things I did bring up in the Silver Cliff meeting is that I agree with these, these guys, the 1,000 cubic feet, that's a 10 by 10 room, 10 by 10 by 10 room. That's, I mean, I've been in grows, I don't know about one plant, but I've been in grows with two plants, and that's it. I mean, you're not gonna get any more than two plants in that. I mean, because they get big. I mean, if you know what you're doing, and I said that on the record, if you know what you're doing, those plants are gonna get big, and they're gonna be very healthy. So the 1,000 square feet, I, I did, I did tell them that's, I don't know how reasonable 1,000 square, 1,000 cubic feet is. So, so to be completely candid, like Mr. Flower and most people that know me know that I don't really, that I'm a pretty honest guy, and I'm just gonna tell you my thoughts on it, so whatnot. And I spent my whole life in law enforcement, and we, we were out of rest and everybody from marijuana back in the, you know, in the old days. You know, not that I'm that old, but you guys, right? None of us are, right? Well, maybe Danny. And so I was adamantly against marijuana, right? I just was, because I saw, I saw what it was doing. But then specifically when Amendment 64 and 20 came in, and we, and we were forced to look at it in a different light, and we're, and we're forced to, to deal with it differently. Knowledge is power, right? So you start looking into it more, you start studying it, you start trying to find out more about it. And I, I will say this, that, so I've never used marijuana, ever, ever. I've never took on it at all. Had three back surgeries, have back pain every day, sucks. I just cope with it. But, but I will say this, I openly recognize that it does have medicinal value. It, it just does. Marijuana does. Because I want you guys to know, I'm not, I'm not against what you're doing. That's not, that's not where I'm going. That's not where I'm at with this. I don't think this ordinance should ever, and, and I would have to go back and look at it, but I, I don't, any of my understanding of the ordinance would have never affected like you, Brandon, that you've got a caregiver grow, it's, it's agricultural, those type of things. My understanding was that it was specifically targeted towards residential property, like you're going it in your basement.
I thought they said that I, that I would have to grow it in my residence, and it would have to be, which I just went out of my way to acquire and be compliant.
Yep. I know.
Okay, again, we are asking for public comment, not, it's not a question and answer period. Go ahead, sir.
That's my fault, because I.
That's all right.
So, so my understanding, and I didn't have it[1731.26] So, so my understanding, and, and I didn't have it in front of me, I asked her, she had an extra one, to kind of peruse her pitch. So that's, that's a deficiency of my part, that I'm not intimately permitted to speak. But, my belief was that we weren't trying to target where you've got a greenhouse, that you're growing in. My understanding of the way it should be is that a residential property, not the residence itself, that's, that's the way I would interpret, or that's the way I would hope to, the intent of it would be, is so that if you own, if you live in Silver Cliff, in a little bitty lot right there, and you're growing your plants in your, in your, uh, trailer, or if you own 140 acres, and you're growing your plants on that 140 acre somewhere, that's your prerogative, that's the way I-
No worries.
No, that's not-
That's, so, so, all I'm saying is, look, I, I would much rather see somebody growing marijuana in a greenhouse, instead of in their basement, where all the moisture and the mold and all that is gonna be in the environment where they live. That's, that's Shannon Barley, Sheriff Barley, you call me all kinds of other names, too.
That's my, that's my thoughts on that.
If we're, if we really wanna make it effective, and, and if, if I miss that, then that's my fault. I should've come in, sent an email, saying, hey, have we thought of this, or have we thought of that? So, but, but those are, I have other thoughts, you guys need to hear all those, but those are a couple of things that I think that we should, that I would actually do at least think about. And then lastly, and then lastly, is that, uh, Mr. Rudd did bring up something that, that is a good, that is a good point, and I could offer, um, to have a review by the County Sheriff's of Colorado's judicial, or, or legal, or attorney. Okay? Um, they could, they could review it as well, to say, hey, you may wanna, you may wanna consider X or Y, because she sees all counties, and she hears about a lot of other legal challenges to those things. I mean, it's something to offer. Um, again, I'm not trying to, to go one way or the other, but, I, I would just like for you to at least-
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Um, I think what he's saying is right on line, and I also think what he said before about, the ordinance says, because of the health and safety of illegal grows springing up all over the county, this is what we have to do. It sounds to me like four years, having six illegal grows busted, like they're doing a great job, and they aren't everywhere. And that, I, you know, so much paperwork for compliance.
Okay. Uh, and that's the second time you've mentioned that, and I'd like to address that a little bit, but, but go ahead.
I would just wanna put a, put an opinion out, maybe a, maybe a, a way to, to spirit him, or, or to tackle this whole problem. I, if you guys, the Sheriff's Department, or anybody else wants to get with the people that are doing it legally, to help, so that, because we don't like people doing it illegally. It's tearing up our forests, it's tearing up all sorts of stuff. We don't like that. So if you can get with us, to talk about how we can combat the illegal side of it, or the unhealthy side of it, or the, or the, or the, you know, people pouring nutrients out on the ground, or, or whatever, that would be, I think, a strategical move on, on, on everybody's behalf in the county.
Okay. All right. Um, you mentioned the four, six illegal grows in the last four years. Uh, you have to understand, in my world, one's too damn many. So I don't care. If there was one, that's unacceptable. I'm, I'm not gonna quantify it, and say, well, we've only had six in four years. No. If we had one in six years, I'd be on the fight about it. Here's what, as Commissioner, that I want, would like for you all to hear, and, and think about. If you walk out of here today, and you say, these three jackasses sitting in front of us had earmuffs on, they didn't hear one damn word we said, and they certainly weren't willing to listen and consider what we said, then it's open season. I have no problem with you getting up in the middle of your commissioners, okay? If you really walk out of here and, and feel that. Now, if you walk out here and go, I don't care one bit for Flower, because he's an idiot, I will claim ignorance, sir. I did not sit here and say, I understand everything. I told you how I felt, okay? That's different. Uh, you have every right to do that. I, I don't have a problem with that. You don't have to agree, you don't have to like it. There are a couple of things in this document that are a concern to me, after listening to you all. Okay? One of them is that thousand cubic feet thing. There's another thing that is in here that bothers me, that I don't think we have talked about. It's easy for me to jump on something, sorry I've been mentioned in politics, and say, oh yeah, you're right, I, I don't agree with that. And that is that, as soon as this dr- gavel drops on an affirmative vote, this takes place immediately. I, I'm not sure I buy that. I think if we, as commissioners, are gonna say, we're gonna place these restrictions on our county, uh, when you walk out of here, you would probably be in violation, correct? If this were adopted today. And I'm not sure that's fair. Uh, to say, we're gonna adopt, or affirmative vote, we are gonna put this in place, but you've got 30 days to prepare to come into compliance or something, I just pulled that number out, then that, to me, is more reasonable than saying, it's gonna be at the drop of this gavel, and now anybody's gonna be out of compliance. I'm not sure that's fair or reasonable. Okay? Yes, sir?
I got a question for Shannon.
Um-
Can I ask him a question?
Chair will allow. Go ahead.
Just, so he, so he can answer my question for you guys. Do you guys have enough manpower to go around the whole county and deal with trying to enforce this if it goes through?
Uh, that, and quite-
Exactly. Take away from the health and safety of the rest of the county having to deal with that.
Money spent.
So, so hon- so honestly, uh, Jeff, you don't care if money-
No, 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 no.
You don't, you don't mind our, that's never, in, in my mind, never been the intent of any of this, to go around and start going, okay, Jeff, where's, do you have 13 plants?
Yeah, yeah.
That's not, that's never been the intent. What the intent, and, and where we're trying to get with this, is, so we've had six or seven illegal grows in residences. Now, we've had other illegal grows, as you guys are well aware of, in the forests and stuff, but this wouldn't affect that anyways, right? But it's, it's extremely difficult, and you guys, you guys will know this is absolutely true, right? So, we know somebody's growing marijuana. And usually you get, you have an inkling, I mean, you guys probably know people that grow marijuana illegally. I'm not asking you to give them up. You probably know some, right? As do we.
Oh, right.
But it's extremely difficult at times. Let's say, let's say that you have a barn, right? And we know, because you can smell, I mean, unless you're dead. Uh, you can smell it. Uh, now, if you've got, if you've got a 40,000 square foot barn, and I can smell marijuana, you got, you got a lot of plants in there.
Yep.
Fair enough?
Right.
And so, but because of the way the laws are written, there's no way for us to establish probable cause, unless we just come and say, hey, Jeff, you grow marijuana, can I take a look? Well, if you're growing it illegally, you're gonna tell me to go pound sand, as I would say.
Yeah.
Right? So, so we're trying to get a, a way to help us, for the people that are growing it illegally, and we know they're growing it illegally, to be able to stash, establish some probable cause, so that we can go in and, and do exactly what you said. The people that are growing it illegally are hurting everybody that's growing it illegally.
They are.
And they give everybody that's growing it legally and wanting to use it in a medicinal fashion, uh, uh, they're giving them all bad nick.
And this doesn't change nothing for anybody that's already grown it illegally.
That's correct.
This just, this just affected us.
This is a thousand dollar fine.
Second.
So you see my, you see where I'm going with that? So, so no, I do not have the staff to start going around knocking on everybody's door, how many plants you got. And, nor am I gonna do that, because I can tell you, I can count us when you're doing your own house.
You wanna grow marijuana, smoke it in your house?
Yeah.
So second, do you think that's gonna cause a problem between people's neighbors if this ordinance is passed, trying to do the nosy-nancy thing?
Of course it is. Shoot. So- Everything, everything comes across between neighbors.
Right. Here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna allow a couple more-
A little tree, it's gonna-
We're gonna allow a couple more public comments, then I will allow the commissioners' final comments, and then we'll move forward. Yes, sir?
It is very apparent by his words, that even the sheriff was not quite positive of the scope of the ordinance as it was written. He believed it was going to affect residences and how they can grow. To me, it sounds like, uh, I may only grow in a residence, and not on my agriculture zone property, where he claims he was just gonna leave me be. And so, I feel like, uh, I feel like you guys aren't ready to vote on this, if, if the sheriff himself doesn't even know the scope of the ordinance.
Okay. Point well taken. It's James, correct, sir?
Sir.
All right. Would like to, to ask you, if you have something you'd like to say to the commissioners. I was a little firm with you earlier. I, I'm not apologizing for that, I'm just offering you an opportunity.
Basically, the opposite of you. I, I see marijuana, and, and Hampton, and all the products that are derived from it, I see it curing cancer every day. I, I cure little babies cancer, that are told to go home and die, in 10 days, 12 days, take your kid home and die. They come to me, and then here it is, two years later, their kid's still alive, cancer-free. I do this all the time, across the world, different countries, you know, I travel a lot, and, and, and I understand you having a negative opinion, and, and due to your background and your upbringing, where you came from, and how you was raised, and all that, that's what dictated that. And I understand that. But to be so cold-heartedly, uh, against us, because of your opinion, i- i- it just doesn't seem right. I mean, and, and, and I'll tell you guys right now, if, if all these, everybody in here in the room got together, we could make this work, to where the houses are protected, no, there will be no illegal grows, because we ain't gonna allow it, and, and, and we can keep our people and medicine here for the people. You know what I mean? It's, it's, and I can understand doing an ordinance, that if you're, yeah, if you're right here, you can have a 10-foot greenhouse. You know, you're not gonna let somebody slap up a 200-foot greenhouse right in their front yard. But anybody that's out, you know, that's got the room, and, and has the means, you know, they should be allowed to do that. And, and, last point, as soon as you guys get cancer, who are you gonna call? Watch. Tell them. And, and I know, and I'm not trying to be an asshole about it, but I'm, I'm a little upset, because we, we got a lot, you know, we got a lot hanging here.
Uh, I appreciate the fact that you've made us aware of that, okay? Uh, that's, again, I don't, I hope you don't go out here going, these commissioners had earmuffs on the whole damn time. They didn't hear a thing we said. Uh, I've certainly been listening, as I believe my fellow commissioners have.
Yeah, I have too, and, and I need to talk, too. This isn't the Jay and Tom Show, it's the Jay, Tom and Bill Show. And I am a vet also, and I, I hear you. Uh, and, and I have grown up in an era where marijuana was puffed out in the schools, and, and I've, I have personal experience, not just my own opinions are based upon how I feel. I've seen things. I've seen marijuana ruin people, and, and their overuse of the stuff. I have a good friend, and he's just a vegetable. I mean, he smoked it every day of his life. And how hypocritical, too, it can be. Uh, the same people that wanna ban smoking, smoked dope, you know? That's crazy. Uh, the same people that wanna ban advertising whiskey on signs, I'm embarrassed to drive up I-25 and see signs for the best, strongest marijuana you can get, come to this gas station at the same time you gas up, you can gas up. You know? Think about it, how crazy we are, how hypocritical, right? And yet, we use heroin in four different forms, to get good medicine, to get, get people out of their, their, uh, pain. Uh, I've seen that, too. I've been there. And, and unfortunately, people abuse it. Just because it's legal now doesn't mean there are people with cards out there that are abusing the system, and creating problems for you guys, if you are straight up, uh, that, that caused Shannon to go out and bust some people. Uh, that is an issue. And, and the fact is, somebody's goodness is somebody else's illness, meaning, I don't like the smell of the place, might you go check it, Shannon? Shannon, they're probably growing 12 plants instead of five, you know? How do you enforce it? And so I happen to agree, uh, the, the, I grew up in this county. I, I love this county, I love our way of life, I wanna keep it that way. This county will not, as long as I'm here, allow commercial production of dope, period. That's my position, as a, uh, having thought through things, and what I want my kids to grow up seeing. I don't want 'em walking down the street and smelling crap, and all that kinda stuff. Uh, and that's the position of this county. Now, does that mean that it, it, you shouldn't be able to do something medicinally? I, I happen to probably concede that there may be some value in that, just like the heroin deal, right? So, I have the same reservations that Tom does, and Jay do, about how this ordinance is written. That's why I asked the question in the first place, on what this was based on, has it been tested? And it evidently hasn't, but 'cause nobody's bothered to do that yet. Uh, I hadn't thought of the thousand square feet. Now, from a, there's two pieces to this ordinance. There's recreational use, and there's medicinal. You guys are all here from a medicinal point of view, is what I'm hearing. I haven't heard one person come in here and say, I can't get by with 12 plants and a thousand square feet in my home, just to go do whatever I do. So how do we, we gotta look at this logically, what are we gonna do? Can we reconsider this and separate the two? Can Shannon enforce the two, uh, back there differently? Uh, you know, those are questions that we gotta consider, as we go through, um, understanding this. Just a second. So, uh, we, we, there are, and even, even your enforcement issue, Tom, that minute you snap the gavel, everybody's, all of a sudden, Shannon's gotta arrest 'em as they walk out the door, you know? I don't think so. So how do we, this is a discussion with, with us, how do we go forward here to do the right thing, um, and still protect our county, and our environment, and our, our way of life?
Can I suggest something, Commissioner? I would like to volunteer, first of all, I'd like to say, let's let this die, this motion die, for lack of passing. I would like to meet with Sheriff's Department, with whoever is a medicinal user, with county, and I will work, I will take it upon myself to, to write something, to bring back to us to consider, to allow the medicinal use. I'm a firm believer, if you read the, if you read the medical, um, articles about marijuana, I'm a believer that there are certainly-
And, and that, I agree.
So what I'd like to recommend is, we allow this motion to die that's on the table, allow me to meet with the, the various groups involved, and let me bring back something for us to discuss.
Before we do that, one other point that, that needs to be made because of that. Processing this stuff has gotten more scientific, and you read about every day how strong things are, and it gets into some gum, bear, gummy bear, and a kid gets a hold of it, and dies, or whatever, you know? There, there's that issue. How do we make sure, see, there's more to it than just cubic feet, X plants, we've gotta consider the whole picture, of what we wanna approve from a medicinal point of view, and a control, and a distribution, and a controlling point of view.
Absolutely agree with what you're saying, and that's what I would like to bring back to this tribunal, um, a modified, um, resolution for ordinance, to say that, here's how we would handle it, to accomplish the problem. I was all in on this, in fact.
Yeah, I was, too.
I think I made the motion earlier. Let's go ahead and approve the second reading. And then I listened carefully, and-
I see.
The more I think about it, the more I think, you know what? I think they're right.
Well, we gotta do it the right-
They have a very valid point. So we need to do the right thing for the people who need the help, and we need also protect the county, which is what this ordinance, I looked at, I did not take this into consideration, and I should have. I was remiss. So, the ordinance serves an excellent purpose, and Shannon brought it to us, talking about these busts, we got a house that's been busted more than one time, I mean, it's a disaster. But this is not what they're asking. They're asking for, help us with our disease issues. I would like to come back and see if we can get a, um, a conglomerate of the different needs, and come up with still, be able to accomplish what the goal is, but to satisfy the true needs of the, I don't know if it's a few citizens in our county, or many citizens, needs of the, I don't know if it's a few citizens in our county or many citizens, the citizens of our county that need the additional help. And I'd like to take that on, and I would like support from my fellow commissioners to allow us to revisit this.
Jeff, you got something?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
He asked me.
It's fine. We'll go through the chair like a meeting is supposed to be run. We're not going to give help or skeletonry. Commissioner Canada, you opened your comments with this not a Tom and Jay Show. If I have been remiss in recognizing you to...
No, no, you didn't.
Let me finish, please. If I have been remiss in recognizing you in your effort to speak as a commissioner, then you certainly call me on the carpet. You call a point of order and you say, "I have every right to speak if I'm not allowing you to speak." I don't believe that's the case.
I wasn't willing to.
I don't think I have ignored you in your request to speak. So, I take offense, sir, and let me finish.
Well, I didn't mean that.
Let me finish. This is how we live and survive as a commissioner, that we can speak, speak openly and honestly. This is the only chance we get. So, if I am remiss in doing that, I certainly expect to be called on the carpet. I agree, can you tell me your name again, sir, in the back kneeling down?
My name's Jeremy Hawkins.
Jeremy. You and I are cut from the same cloth in this regard, sir, that we do sometimes let our emotions override us. I'm a very emotional person, and so I understand what you're saying. And so, I just want to say, as a chairman of this commission, if I'm remiss, then I expect to be called on the carpet by either one of you gentlemen. I don't believe that has happened this morning, so I thought your comment was unfair about this is a Jay and Tom Show, I just want to say that. I would let you rebut that because you have been...
No, I'm not going to rebut it because I didn't mean it that way. I wanted to make sure, you know, I sit, listen and absorb it, and everybody else has had a chance to talk, and I wanted to make sure I was on point. And that was the only, it was not directed at one of you as somebody that wouldn't allow me to speak. Sorry that came up.
As a commissioner, I'm not willing to just let this motion die. This is what I would be willing to do, and I will do that, is I will make a motion to postpone until our March 29th BOCC meeting, and give us 30 days to come back and review this and take into account everybody's comments, concerns. I happen to agree with Commissioner Prince about getting together and revisiting this. I'm certainly not interested in railroadin' something through that's irresponsible and not well thought out.
So, Roberts, rules wise, that's possible, then what are we going to do?
I just made a motion to postpone definitely to March 29th.
March, yeah. I'm going to second it, but I have a comment after.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to postpone this item of business with, let me restate that, it's been moved and seconded to postpone the adoption of this second reading of this ordinance until March 29th discussion.
I would say that I will work diligently with all the groups involved, Sheriff's Department, legal counsel, and the gentleman and nice lady who are here, and anybody else who has something, I will do my very best to have something to present for the 29th meeting, but that's a pretty short timeframe to do this, so I just want to put on the record that I may come back and say, "We are working towards something, maybe we postpone it again." I just want to put that on the table.
Would be your right, and in response, let me say why I made the motion the way I did. I just didn't want to leave this open ended. I think we were prepared, obviously, to a vote today, so I don't want to milk this out another three or four months. If that time constraint ends up being unreasonable, then certainly, as commissioners, we have every right to postpone that again.
Perfect.
Further discussion on the motion?
I think that's reasonable.
I will take one more, I'm going to call it a public comment, and before I do, I want to commend you all. You've been very respectful, articulate, well spoken, well thought out. Go ahead, sir.
I know, I heard y'all's conversation about, you know, trying to figure out something about the medical side of it and how to change this, or how we can bring it back up to the drawing board. I just have a concern, being a veteran firearm owner, you know, I'm sure these guys like in the back of their mind knowing that there's a bunch of veterans in this county that are carrying, that if they're on the side of the road, they're getting beat, that there's somebody there that can help them. With the new laws that are coming in with the state and owning a red card and being able to purchase firearms, maybe even possess firearms, who knows where it's going now because they just voted it down, it's going to back up for something else. If we don't have medical cards, but we still use the plant medicinally and want to be able to protect ourselves, our families, hunt for our own food, I think the recreational side also needs to be looked at.
I would, I would be happy to discuss, and we discussed this entire round.
We have a motion on the floor, and typically, the public comment would be whether or not we should postpone this until March 29th. I know that's not where your comments are going, so I'm going to beg your understanding here. Any further discussion on the motion that reads, "We will postpone consideration of ordinance 19-01's final reading and adoption until March 29th"? Yes, ma'am?
I would suggest April. I'd suggest the end of April.
Okay.
Just as a question of process, when you postpone it, the vote, does that mean that the exact same wording of what we just all discussed might not be right? If you guys will be voting on the exact same wording in a month?
Uh, no, we're, well, we're postponing the adoption of this ordinance, so it could be amended as, in my perception, Commissioner or Counselor, input on that?
Yes. If we're only amending it, something like instead of a thousand cubic feet, you changed it to say 4,000 cubic feet, which is 20 by 20 by 10, I mean, that could probably be done without having to do a whole rereading if it's more substantial.
Right. If we change the intent of the ordinance, then it would have to start over the entire process.
Just as an example, my growing facility is 47,000 cubic feet.
Okay. One more time, yes, sir, last comment.
Thank you for your due diligence. What, how can we be notified when we can get with you to try to work with you?
That's a good question.
About 10 seconds.
It's a good question.
As soon as we vote, I'm going to give you information on how we can get together.
Thank you, sir. Let's call the question and get that out of the way.
Question's been called, is there a second?
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to move previous question. If passed, this will end all debate and call for immediate vote. All in favor of immediate questions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion, previous question carries. All in favor of postponing the final adoption of ordinance 19-01 until March 29th, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Commissioner Prince?
Thank you, sir, I appreciate you recognizing me. What I'd like to do, if you could, for the folks that are here, if you could appoint one person who will receive information and disseminate to everybody, that'd be really easy for me.
Danny's in.
Danny, I'm happy to do, I don't care, I'm happy to work with Danny, so that I can get with Danny and say, "How's this date where we can get together for our first meeting", that type of thing. Sheriff, would you be able to have one of your deputies or maybe the Assistant Sheriff, Under Sheriff, be able to join us in the meeting?
Absolutely, yeah. Well, I mean, we want it to be a...
Right. I want it to be a conglomerate, and I'd like to open it to...
We want it to just be something that we can't enforce and it's violating somebody's rights or...
Right. And I'd like to, if I may, please, just let me finish this one second, and I'd like to open it to the public, if anybody else wants to come to help formulate a...
So, I'm hearing your contact will be Danny, but we could all come to the meeting?
Yes. Okay, great. Absolutely.
And are you prepared to pick a date today, sir?
Well, I was going to ask Danny if he could give me either an email or how I could reach a phone or something. I'll look at my calendar, I'll call you today, and we'll set something up in the next day or two.
Do you want my email address now?
Perfect.
Jester, J-E-S-T-E-R.
You can just write it down.
Yeah, you can write it down. If you don't mind, Danny, we're...
That's fine, I don't want to...
And you may or may not have known this, I should have mentioned it earlier, and I apologize, this meeting's being livestreamed, and so certainly, if Danny wants to give his email out publicly, he can, but if he wants to write it down...
I can also find him on Facebook, he's very literate on Facebook, I see it all.
So, we're going to move forward, here's what the Chair would request, that if you have, if you have further conversations pursuant to this, I would ask that you take those out in the hallway. We've still got an agenda to deal with on this meeting, and so that you guys understand, I want to say this on the record. And it was my mistake, Mr. Gulliver, I apologize to you publicly, sir. It was not intentional, I jumped right over the next agenda item and went to this resolution. That was out of order, I should not have done it, I apologize. You were patient to sit here and wait because you were next on the agenda. So, gentlemen and folks, I just want you to understand that Mr. Gulliver's been very patient to sit and bide his time as well. So, thank you for being here, I appreciate that. Again, if you want to continue this discussion, I would ask that you do it in the hallway so we can move on.
Yes, sir, thank you for...
Yeah, and I'd like to thank you all too, but you were very articulate, and it wasn't, you know, it was emotional too, but it was controlled, and I appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
You bet, thank you.
I think this is a very good lesson in government.
Next item of business, and again, I apologize, sir, Mr. Gulliver, please come forward.
You might need to talk from the door.
Uh, you can sit in this chair, actually.
Come forward.
Well, then, the people in the back?
No, that's all right, it's standard procedure.
Oh, that's what ladies are going to be in the...
It's what we'd expect.
We always.
Welcome.
Nice to see you again, sir.
Well, you're there.
And I think Commissioner Prince and I have met, Mr. Gulliver, this is Commissioner Canada, Terry Gulliver, our County Attorney Clint Smith, and this is our Secretary to the Board Kelly Cooper. So, welcome.
Yes. Thank you, well...
Thank you for coming, sir, and I appreciate the delay, I appreciate your patience.
Yeah, without any medicinal aid, I sat through it.
I'd be able to fix it, I don't know, we'll see how it goes.
So, I'm Terry Gulliver, I'm here today because I had come to Commissioners Prince and...
Flower.
Flower, sorry.
No, no.
To talk about volunteering professional services on a volunteer basis as a retiree to regarding water issues that might be abused in the county. I have a tinge of an accent, and I can't really do a whole lot about that, I'm afraid, but I've been in Colorado for 40 years, and I have owned a house up by Alpine Lodge for about eight years or something rather, so I'm not exactly a native, but I'm at least a part-time resident. And I'm now more or less retired, I still do some, a little bit of work on the site, but I have time to consider what retirees often do as sort of the civic duty of retirees, volunteering help to their communities. And I have been a geologist for, actually, I'd have to look at my resume and try and remember, but about 12 or 15 years, and then a groundwater hydrologist for about 25 years. And I was fortunate in that time to do a broad variety of water-based issues, so I've got a breadth of experience in that. I have approached Round Mountain and offers my services recently, and I'm not doing anything with them at the moment, but I volunteered that. But a couple of weeks ago, I attended the meeting over at the bowling alley when the Upper Ark came and delivered their proposal to augment, as the saying goes. Augment is sort of a bit of a shell game in a lot of people's eyes, it's basically water trading, and I was impressed by several things. One, that there was a large turnout, and people were almost unanimously against it, and they understood what augmentation is by and large, and that is to say, they've been through this process before. And it's, I think, is, and they rejected it, the plan. And I think it's evident that this is going to cycle again, it's going to come back in the future. And so, I am here today to propose that the time may be ripe for the commissioners to form an exploratory committee to look into the value of perhaps a nonprofit water conservancy body in the county to control water rights in the county, to try to keep water in the county, to help administer water rights that are potentially lapsing through disuse because people can't really keep up with them anymore, or there are people who, ranches who also want to sell their water rights occasionally, and the danger is that those rights then go out of the county and are never recovered. I think that there's enough interest in the county in, on the parts of particularly the farming community that wanting to keep the water here and not having it stolen away from them, that it's worth the time, and if some of those rights can be administered in the county, there'd be enough fees generated that a conservancy body could more than pay for itself. That I think that if you set up an exploratory committee for such a thing, that you would want to have representation of the farmers, whether that's cattlemen or whatever body that is, I'm not sure, the county, the towns, San Isabel, certainly Round Mountain, and that these people should talk about common interests in keeping the water in the county. I had a little cheat card here somewhere for when I ran out of things, but...
Take your time.
So, there are a lot of questions involved in what such conservancy would do, and what they would have to do to be formed, you would have to get a water lawyer. I'm not a water lawyer, I don't know water law, it's to me scary. I've done a lot of work around water rights and finding water supply, but when it comes to the legal issues, I always have to stop and think what the heck augmentation really means, and even things like conjunctive use of groundwater and surface water, a lot of those things are not just legal terms, but they're shifting senses. So, a lawyer would have to be, got on board at some stage. The boundaries of such a conservancy would be kind of interesting to think about whether it's the county, whether it's the valley, and if that would extend into Wefono down past the Navajo ranches, et cetera. Another big question for the conservancy would be whether there's any value in actually staying in the Upper Ark District. It was voiced at the meeting that there's almost 50,000 paid in taxes, mill levies to that district, and whether you're getting your money for that, your value for that money, or whether it could be used better in a locally controlled conservancy board is certainly a big issue. I think one of the issues that people were most uncomfortable with around the augmentation plan was a sort of unarticulated threat to groundwater. Groundwater is a strange issue here because there's a huge aquifer, and almost nothing is known about it, and how it is connected to the surface water. There's really very little information on it. What I found is sketchy, and I can get sort of a general idea about what's going on there. There was a, USGS put out a report in 1978 about water resources, and it has a lot of reliance on a well that was drilled to 1,200 feet up by the Degrey Ranch, but it's, there's very little real information, and to try to assess a whole aquifer, I mean, if you look at something like the Denver Basin, or the Fountain or Lubulak, for people to spend millions of dollars on those things trying to assess the connections, defining the actors, who owns the rights, and all that sort of thing, and this, the county cannot afford to do that sort of thing. But what I would commit to doing for this conservancy board, if it's formed, is, in fact, I might do this anyway, but I'll hold it until there's somebody to present it to us, write a report of what the groundwater seems to be as a resource, and what potential there is for it to be used, and what the questions are, and how much money it would cost to resolve those questions. We can say that it might cost $10 million to sort of characterize the aquifer here, and the county's not going to cough that up, but to the city of Aurora, that's peanuts if they could get 100 million acre feet of water out of it. So, we, this, the valley needs to have an idea of what the water resource is, not just the surface water that everybody is using, but also the groundwater, which is sort of in touch with it, it's tributary in other words, and whether you can actually, what the potential is for its use in the valley, and whether there are isolating zones in there such that there's a confined aquifer underneath that somebody could come in and state claims on and try to export that water. So, I'm prepared to do that. I'm not, I can certainly participate in the exploratory committee for, as I've proposed, in giving advice. I'm not, I don't have any details, so I certainly don't have a plan to put on the table and say, "Hey, give us $50,000 from the Upper Ark and we'll just go run with this." I'm saying, form a committee, investigate it, and I will help as, mostly as a groundwater person, getting together the information that's available to characterize what can be characterized.
You're proposing that as a pro bono kind of thing, you're volunteering?
Yes, if it gets to be, if it gets to be where I'm driving to Salida and Pueblo and everything every day, then I might sort of start asking for, you know, is it a bit of, you know, expenses, the sorts of things that you guys probably get, but I'm not asking for any pay otherwise. If there was something, for instance, that, you know, somebody wanted to, if the board, if the conservancy wanted to do a drilling program to explore the water right, then I might help you put out a proposal, and then if I administered it, then, you know, that's all different stuff, but what I'm proposing at the moment is basically pro bono volunteers and...
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. First, let me thank you for coming here, you know, we have a lot of wonderful people in this community who do come forward and volunteer. It always makes my heart feel good when they come and you say, "I want to..." And I'm not kissing on tea, I'm just telling them, like Commissioner, Chairman Flower said earlier, he's emotional, I am too, and... I am too, and it just makes my heart feel good to know that people are willing to come forward and say, I want to help the county, and here's what I can do. So, thank you, and that's sincere. A couple of questions. You mentioned that there's a USGS report or something that may give us some idea of the amount of water in the aquifer. We need another, another study?
Well, that was based on shallow wells. The deepest well that they have any data for was twelve hundred feet deep. There's, I mean, wells start to get expensive after that depth, anyway, but if there's, you know, another eight thousand feet of depth of water underneath it, and Aurora comes and says, we're taking it, it would be nice to know what is down there. I suspect that if there is a clay confining layer, there seems like there might be from that log, and that was actually done by the USGS, so it's a little bit better than the average geotech junior sitting on a well with his...
When did they do that?
It was a nineteen seventy-eight report.
Nineteen seventy-two.
Nineteen seventy-two.
We're doing it.
In a way, it's forty years old, I'm aware.
It's not that the aquifer's really moved a whole lot, but, and there aren't a whole lot more wells. There is a rumor, and I haven't tracked them down yet, of a couple of oil exploration wells having been drilled earlier even than that. And they should have logged them, but in those days, they didn't waste their money on the shallow crud that they drilled through, so there might not be anything. But I certainly want to go to Oil and Gas Commission and see if those can be found, because if you could even find an electrical log through the, you know, some of that stuff, it would be interesting to see. I suspect that if there is a confining layer, so that there's a confined aquifer that's not connected to the surface, then it's going to be saline, and it may be too saline for irrigation, but it may be something that could be blended. So, anything that's, freshwater may be declared tributary, so that if you, if you pump it, it's actually going to draw down the water table in your neighbor's place, and that's revoked, and so, but you may be able to use it conjuntively with the surface water if you understand the system well enough.
I was going to defer to Commissioner Canada, but that's okay.
I apologize.
Anything?
Couple of things. You're proposing a committee here.
I think at the first stage, you do a little exploratory committee, certainly the biggest stakeholders are the ranchers, the farming community. So, get some stakeholders together, have them discuss if they really even want to do it. I think they will say, the people were pretty fired up at that meeting about, get the hell out of here.
They are. Part of the problem is, it's a lack of knowledge, it's a lack of, I see this sort of as a redundancy. There is a conservancy, that's the Upper Ark guys, there's supposed to be a conservancy, and they're supposed to be watching out for us, right? If, if you believe in. What we, what I was looking at personally, and having had enough interaction with the Upper Ark guys to get where they're headed yet, and I intend to, is, I think we, a committee is a good thing, if it's, you know, our own water board, per se, that's looking out for the ranchers and the underground water, that really interacts with that board, because they're strengthened, we don't have the money, and we don't have enough, we're not going to raise a tax that I can see that's going to be enough value to go fight Aurora if they want our aquifer. You know, you've got to spend a lot of money fighting that in a water court.
Right.
Supposedly what these guys are supposed to be doing for us, so...
Yeah.
But we've got to get them under control, we've got to be, we've got to be part of it. Maybe, maybe that's a good thing to be thinking about.
But in terms of revenue, if I was to find for you in the valley, in the public records of the state, of Jerry Leibengood's data, that's collected by the state in the public database, say, a hundred cubic feet of water, I mean, a hundred acre-feet of water every year that's not, hasn't been consistently used over the last ten years, so it's in danger of lapsing. There's water rights lapsing. And, and this agency, which might be one person in a corner office here in the courthouse, could, plus the board, the conservancy, could lease that money somewhere, preferably inside the valley, but if not, say, to Pueblo, and generate two hundred thousand dollars' worth of revenue, and take ten percent of that as fees, then you've paid half a person's salary. Stuff adds up, you know, I mean, I'm not, these are very much what-if sorts of things, but it's, that's why I don't have a piece of paper for you to say.
And we know, Bill, just to follow up on that, if I may, we know that the Upper Ark has two million dollars in cash just sitting there, so they're generating revenue. I just wanted to make that comment, that we know Upper Ark has that money, we sent it to meetings where they reported. And they tend to use that, hopefully, to defend things, but we, and buy, and buy water as well.
Right, but I think, part of the suspicion that I got at that meeting was that people couldn't really talk too much about the groundwater because they don't know the aquifer, but the threat is that Upper Ark may want to try to use groundwater to augment, they're taking the water somewhere else, and so, and that don't, nobody knows what those impacts are, and some of that stuff is unspoken, so we don't really know what it is. But knowing what the aquifers helps in that whole augmentation game, and protect their augmentation game, the water trading from, and, you know, several people said at that meeting, if you take water from this tributary to augment down here, that doesn't necess, it might help these guys, and it's not mitigating the damage up there.
But then, I would like to see you, if we had this committee or conservancy, then hold their feet and use their engineers, and their leverage, their wherewithal, and make them do what they're supposed to be doing for us.
Right.
That's my view is...
Right.
That would be a very good, a big value to us, because right now, we don't, from a representative point of view, we're undermanned over there. We've only got two reps.
Right. So, I'm not proposing that you do a big drilling program, I'm saying that you, if you had a committee...
Well, I don't look at Bobby, he's a director.
That you could give more feedback on that, and keep overseeing engineering. Yep.
Just a question. As you know, we filed a protest.
Yeah.
You probably know that we are trying to hold them to their word that if we choose not to be part of this new augmentation plan that they're proposing, that they would cut Custer County out, and we sent a letter to them formally requesting that they honor their commitment that they made to us. Whether they do or not, I don't know, but that's what we did. So, my question would be, are we jumping the gun? Should, if they, if they cut Custer County out of the old plan that they have filed with the Water Court, do we really need to do this? But I heard you say something when you first sat down, that this is going to be an ongoing, I mean, if they don't do it this time, maybe next time they will, and if they don't do it the next time, maybe the time after that they'll do it. So, is that where you're coming from on this?
Exactly. I think that people were hot under the collar at that meeting, precisely because it's cycled back, and they've rejected it in the past, and it's going to keep coming back again. Denver and the whole Front Range is growing like crazy, and everybody, all the developers assure each other that they've got lots of water.
Right.
Yeah.
Where are they going to get?
Right.
Well, if I may, I think, a couple of things, you may or may not be aware of, at least at one time, there existed the Custer County Water Users Association.
Yes.
I don't think that was ever formally dissolved, I think it kind of lapsed into some state of being after Upper Ark voluntarily withdrew their last water augmentation plan for Custer County. So, there's a possibility of looking into that organization as well, and saying, are you, you folks that were involved, are you interested in reviving that water users group? I think there was, would be some value to that. Doesn't mean there can't be other people come on board to that, but it would be interesting to kind of poke that bear and see if it's still viable.
Yes, I don't know the history of why, who the stakeholders were in that, or why it dissolved, if it was really formed in self-defense against a former initiative and then sort of faded away.
I think primarily it was, I suspect, the minutes that I've read from those meetings kind of indicate that that was why.
Right.
I think, there's a couple of things I wanted to just mention quickly. One is, I would encourage you to regularly attend Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District meetings. The next one is March fourteenth in Salida. I can certainly get you that information if you're interested.
Yeah, I can look it up.
But I think, as Commissioner Canada said, we all need to get more knowledgeable, and stay on top of the, on top of this game. And then, the other thing that you spoke about that piqued my interest, and I, I'm convinced of this, nobody knows what's this underground aquifer is, can delineate it and define it, I just have not seen anything that anybody can unequivocally say, this is exactly what's going on.
Yeah.
And without your thinking of drilling forty wells, I don't think they could ever determine that, whether it's a closed basin aquifer or not. But I do think it is a pending and looming, low-hanging fruit. We didn't think of them that way before, but when the dollars get big enough, I can see people forget surface water, it's over-appropriated, let's go after...
That's right.
Ground basin water.
One second, I need to be excused for thirty seconds.
No problem. So, appreciate, I think what you're saying, I would like for us to move forward, and part of that being, let's look into this Water Users Association and see if that's still viable, a place to start.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the committee.
You know, the other part of it was, that I suggested, you know, that there's a lot of water rights around in the valley, that people have either tried to sell, because, you know, they've, the ranchers own them, and they sort of see that as part of their retirement plans.
Absolutely.
There's those, plus there's the water rights that are kind of in danger of lapsing, because the son has gone to Patagonia, and the family doesn't want to irrigate that top forty acres anymore, and that water, that little water right, that's less than one CFS, hasn't been used consistently over the last ten years, it's in danger of lapsing. If you've got all those together, and you have one administrator, they could actually lease that water and return that money to the water rights owner with a little fee for the administration.
That's a good idea.
Keep the water in the valley.
Interesting idea.
Yeah, I, I'll get to you in just a second, sir. I don't, I'm not going to argue with you about that, I just want to share my perception on that. I have done a little research, pending water abandonment rights, very few and far between here. I'm not going to say there isn't any. I know there are some, and in particular, one major water right that's within its, probably its last of ten-year abandonment cycle, so no question in my mind, that water will not be abandoned. I'm not aware of any abandoned water rights floating around in the county that's available, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't come up at a tenth, or a quarter, or a third of an acre-foot at a time. So, I'm not arguing with your premise, I just, I'm just not aware of that. I've spoken with Water Commissioner Leibengood about it, and he said, if you think there's a lot of abandoned water rights floating around, you're going to come up short. Tom, I said, okay. Go ahead, sir.
I would just make two points. One is, currently, Upper Ark, the district, and I believe the county, is also participating in a water balance study utilizing USGS. I believe we're in the last of our third year, the third year of the three-year program, so that's, that will be coming out at some point. The second point that I would like to make is that I would argue that any committee that would be done, or any organization that would be acquiring information, would be a private entity, so that it does not become public knowledge, so that it does not become available to Aurora, or Denver, or Colorado Springs.
Good point.
Before we figure out what to do with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point, sir. And just a quick follow-up on the water balance study. We are in our final year, we just made our final payment of, three-year payment of sixteen hundred and sixty-seven dollars to pay for that water balance study. Chelsea Nutter was kind of the administrator for that. She has moved on, she is no longer with Upper Ark, so they're going to be, I'm sure, be bringing somebody else on board.
My understanding from her email was that she would continue with those programs that she's already engaged with.
She had an agreement with Upper Ark that she would continue to help them, but I would guess there'll be somebody new coming on, so. Mr. Gulliver, thank you, I appreciate that. I don't see any reason why, in my opinion, we can't continue some sort of relationship and move forward. I know there is a growing sentiment out there, my phone indicates that, that there are people, water right holders, that would like for somebody to take the lead and see about seceding from Upper Ark Water Conservancy District, and starting their own Water Conservancy District. I don't know, I think there's two sides to that big old coin, but I've had several people say it'd be the best thing ever happen to this county if we could do something different. The problem with that is, human nature is always going to rise to the top, so what's to preclude a new conservancy district from getting the money and the power, and ending up as a bastardized organization that forgot what their original mission and values were?
Yeah, that's why I'd like to see us understand what Upper Ark's doing now, because we, they just get our letters, and they're going to react somehow. It's going to necessitate us doing something to be sure that we interact. They're not going to go away, they are not going to go away. And so, we, I see a need to have a, whether we do something separate later on, it may happen or not, we've still got to deal with the now. And I like the idea of having a couple of guys that are focused only on that, instead of bouncing around with a lot of other things, and I'm glad to hear you, you want to focus. We need a couple others, including some rancher types, to make sure that our issues are understood at that board, regardless of where they're headed. And we can fight it, or go with it, or leverage their resources, so, you know, so let's see what happens.
Real quickly, if I may, generally, we're rabbit-trailing just a little, but I think it's not on the agenda, and I think it'd be appropriate time to bring it up. We filed a statement of opposition with the Division Two Water Court, as we have publicly said, for one of the reasons, so that we could have a seat at that table. So, we did receive, the commissioners did receive two documents this last week. One was from the St. Charles Water District, they filed a statement of opposition, it is here, I kept a file on that. The other one that we received was from a local water right holder here went through the statement of opposition to the Water Court down there, it was rejected absolutely because the form was improperly filled out. I talked with the water right holder who submitted that, made them aware of that, which I'm sure they're going to get the same documentation.
Any reason why you can't tell us what you did?
I, I don't know, it's public knowledge, so John and Sally Brandonberg submitted a statement of opposition, you're welcome to look at it, but it was filled out improperly and rejected by the court. So, those are the updates on it. Maybe we ought to put that on the standing agenda items.
Probably ought to, at least every other week.
It's a Division Two update thing.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
We could also bring it up under Commissioner's items, too, I guess.
What's your phone number? If you've got a card?
Be careful with the...
I think you've got my resume.
I tried to email you...
You did?
A couple of times, and it got rejected every time, and I think it's because I was using an O instead of a C.
A zero, right.
Yeah. I think I saw one more, sir, if you don't mind.
Oh, sorry.
I thought you were getting one.
Over there.
Thank you. Okay, well, we appreciate your time, your interest, your willingness to volunteer to look into some stuff, and we look forward to utilizing your expertise and knowledge in this area, and we'll move forward.
Okay.
Can I just make a last comment before you wrap? You talked about the so organization that was here before.
Yep.
We talked about maybe, is that something you could look into, or is that something we need to look into to see?
Well, I don't have any history, that was actually before my time, I don't know any of the people who are involved, I have heard rumors of them, but that's all.
Okay.
So, probably Jerry Leibengood would know all about them, and...
Because I encourage you to at least speak with them, see what their thoughts are.
I mean, I personally know some people who are involved in that, obviously, if they're not, obviously, I didn't mean that. not, obviously, I didn't mean that, I apologize. The chairman of the last functioning Water Users Association has passed away, and he was a former commissioner, he was a commissioner while he served in that position, so, that was Alan Butler. But I can continue to do some research, come up with those minutes, provide those to the.
Yeah, it's interesting, actually. It certainly wouldn't hurt, because Bill Prince has a really good point. Even if we stay with the Upper Ark, these folks need to be involved, and even know what's going on, they need to have a voice at the table, whether they're in the background and raise their hand. So whether we do it on our own, or we have, it's imperative, and this was very obvious at the public meetings we've had recently, that our ranchers have been out of the loop and need to be in the loop.
And I think it's our job to make sure they are.
And that's why I agree with this.
We're representative, and I like the idea, we can make them come over here and give presentations. I mean, they, they think they do, Bob thinks he has, but they, they're, they don't.
Right, it doesn't necessarily have to be oppositional to Upper Ark, but it's a local group of people who are following their own interests, following the valley's interests.
That's what I like about that, then, there's nothing more important than agua.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would encourage you to attend at least this next Upper Ark meeting, and then maybe some subsequent ones there, too. And to that vein, you know, I've sat through a lot of those meetings, as, as has Commissioner Prince prior to us coming on the board, Commissioner Canada's been to some, very little business in those meetings have to do with Custer County, with the exception of this aug plan. I mean, I've said it for a year and a half, they talk about, of course, their water rights in Conquistador 1 and 2, but only as an informational on a chart, this is our record footage, this is our releasing, this was the timing.
And even that, if you think about it, now, it just dawned on me, even those can impact, it's because they're, they're releasing water, they're taking water, and it impacts us just on the business that they do internally over there, it affects. That's why it's important to have somebody always involved, from our point of view, so that we can react and, and help guide them, on how, whether it injures us or not.
Yeah, I think one of the good things out of all of this augmentation, I think we're going to see a different mode of operation at Upper Ark than it has been in the past. We will see, I could be wrong, but I fell off the cusp of a little different way of operating. Go ahead, sir.
It would be nice, because I asked them many years ago if I could get a copy of all of those charts and all of the public presentation stuff, and basically the response was no, but that was for.
How can that be, they're a public outfit?
Well, I can understand that prior to the board meeting, that is a board document, so it, it is for the board, but beyond that, I think it needs to be made available on their, on their website. I have not been made aware that it, that it has, and possibly something from you all might help disseminating that information.
Yeah, I've requested an agenda spot on their March 14th agenda, and that may be a great time to at least make that request again, and a little more public and official.
I will, I will take it upon myself to revisit their webpage.
Yeah.
And make sure that they haven't been, been added.
You know, that's a good point, because technology's changed, and it's hard to get the hard copies out, and I don't want to mess with it.
Yeah, I don't blame you, I was asking for, because I don't want them.
I don't have the time to give it to you.
I don't want them to favor.
Okay, all right, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it, you bet. Thank you again for your patience, I apologize.
Thanks for your interest.
Yes.
We blew by you, and I should never have, so.
Cut his mock top down.
Couple minute recess. Hey, Ms. Kelly, you okay?
Good.
Thrown my piece of hard candy from her talking.
Meeting will come back to order. The next item of business, sorry, let me back up. Any further new business, gentlemen, that you're aware of?
No.
Needs to come forward, sir?
No.
Nor do I. Any public comment? If not, then we will proceed to move into an executive session for the purpose of securing legal advice. And that will be, give me just a second here, almost quoted Personnel Matters, and this is not, so. Yuck.
Can I make a motion?
Uh, yes, but I want to be able to cite it, unless you already know the citation, which.
I usually just say, based on the authorization of Colorado by statute.
Okay, and we do need to cite that specifically, so, hold on just a second.
I've got a sheet if you would.
Well, I'm sure it's 246402, but I just want to make sure, yes, that's correct. So this would be the citation, sir, if you're prepared to make a motion.
That we move into an executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal matters under Colorado by statute, section 246402, B.
Thank you, sir, I'll second the motion. But moving second is that we move into executive session for a conference with the county attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a specific legal question under Colorado by statute, 24 dash 6 dash 402, sub-paragraph 4, sub-paragraph B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries, we are now in executive session.
Get the makeup man back in here first.
Kelly, you recording? Okay, BLCC meeting is called back to order, the time is 12:31, February 28, 2019. Counselor, would you have a statement pertaining to the executive session?
The executive session was for the purpose of me giving you some information and some legal advice on possible future legal action, and we did stay on topic throughout the meeting, and no decisions were made during the executive session.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate that. So again, the time is 12:31 PM, the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Meredith Nichols, Administrative Assistant to the Board, Ms. Kelly Camper, Secretary to the Board, Commissioner Canada, Commissioner Flower, Commissioner Prince, and County Attorney Clint Smith. For the record, if any person who has participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matter is not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the opening meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Hearing none, we are officially in the BLCC meeting, and the next item of agenda is, and I have just a couple of things I wanted to bring to the board, I should have done it in our Commissioner's items, I failed to do that, so I just want to throw these out real quick. One, I, I would like to see the commissioners consider a motion to direct Attorney Smith to file for an injunction when the time is appropriate. I don't know if we need to do, handle that today, I don't know when the appropriate time might be, if it's in the next few days, in the next week, two weeks, we meet again on Tuesday and Wednesday. Would you like to put that on the agenda then, and deal with it?
Okay. Yeah. It'll work.
I was gonna make, but.
Yeah, okay. I don't think we'd be out of order putting it on an agenda, upcoming agenda, do you, Attorney Smith?
No, if we put it on an agenda, we don't have to state the reason why, I mean, other than based on the information I've given you in the executive session, you, you know, made it, or are going to make a decision at that time, that would be fine.
So, well, why wouldn't we do it now?
We could, it's, I think, any decisions subsequent to an executive session would be in order, don't you? I mean, I don't think we have to have previous notice, 24-hour notice.
No, that's fine, and if you decide that's what you want to decide today, although it's not an agenda item today.
Right, and that's the only reason I was thinking about it, because we didn't have that 24-hour.
That's why I started to talk, and I shut up, because it's like a.
I think we better to have it as an agenda item.
Yeah. I would really like to just authorize legal counsel to use his best judgment, and if he feels it's appropriate to file injunction, we're gonna back up our, we don't tell the sheriff when to make a drug bust or anything else, I think we could just authorize legal counsel to use his best judgment.
And for the record, I did explain what I was contemplating doing, and I think the only issue would be whether this should be an agenda item for you to be, even on the public, to comment, they're gonna want to know who, and what, and why, and everything, and discuss that. It'll be a matter of public record if, once I take the, the legal action that we talked about possibly doing.
Yeah, I, the only reason I said that was for the 24-hour notice thing. But I think subsequent to an executive session, we probably can make a decision based on information in the executive session, but.
You can.
It's up to you guys, whatever you feel.
And it's, even if it's on an agenda item, they're not going to have all the information immediately, they can, it can be disclosed as soon as the, as the action is taken, but until then, it's just authorizing me to do something, so.
Your choice, gentlemen, I defer.
We ought to make the motion. Okay, I move that we authorize the county attorney to take appropriate legal action based on his, his legal recommendation, as discussed in executive session, without further authorization from.
I'll second BLCC. The moon is setting, and to authorize the attorney to move forward with any legal action on behalf of the county commissioners that he deemed appropriate subsequent to our discussion in executive session.
Good.
Discussion, hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. And then, the other thing I wanted to just run by real quick, gentlemen, probably need to have this on a subsequent agenda as well, I did meet with Jeff Outhier for service, they are going to pursue opening the top end and the lower end of County Road 365, is it? The, the South Heart Scrabble.
South Heart Scrabble.
Was wiped out in the recent flooding. They want to open that to the public for camping, hiking, hunting, the normal activities that go on there. They're talking about proposing the top three-quarters of a mile down, and the bottom, the lower one and a half miles up, one and a quarter of miles of that is across Bill Donnelly's ranch, and then there would be a quarter mile stretch, actually, onto the National Forest property. So he asked if we could have a discussion about that, number one, is the county prepared to maintain those portions of road, can we keep those open? He has had a discussion with Gary Hyde, and Gary told him that he didn't think that would be a problem. He's not looking for a decision today, or an action item today, but I wanted to just mention that. They're not, he's not going to allow any camping within a certain radius of the parking lot, so it's really a parking lot, and then hiking, backpacking, and camping, and that was one of Donnelly's concerns, he didn't like those people driving in there and camping and bringing all their stuff and trash.
So there would be vehicular traffic on the open portion, not just pedestrian?
That is correct. Up, on the upper and the lower portion of those roads would be open to vehicle traffic, parking lot at each end.
It is County Road 36.
Yes.
66.
Five.
29.
29. Okay, all right. So he was hoping that we would, they'd have all the stuff done before then, we'd come to a formal vote on the 29th. Thank you. Okay, so just FYI. Anything else, gentlemen, to come before the board?
It's 386.
386.
All right, I don't know where I got 365.
Anything else, Commissioner?
No.
Canada, Commissioner Prince. With consent, Chair will adjourn this meeting at 12:38 PM. Thank you, guys.